Good morning, and I call the September 1, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the American County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please solidify your electronic devices, remove hats to avoid disturbance of others. And I ask the school board attorney to explain the rules for this work session.
Thank you Chair Cummings. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes of time. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, sir. Again, good morning. Dr. Gullett?
Good morning Chair Cummings, members of the Board. Great to see you this morning. I just have two very brief items. One, just as a reminder that now that it's actually September, we need to review our Board meeting times again. We said we agreed to do that in September. So if there's anything that you need for me or my team to do, just let me know, put that on an agenda perhaps. And then, secondly, Mr. Green, Brian Green, should have reached out to all of you with a request for a shade session. Just wanted to get confirmation of that time and date that works for the Board. I know you would want to do that sooner than later. It was proposed perhaps because there's no Board meeting or work session next week, it's our off week, that perhaps it could be on Wednesday at 9:00, and if not, then I'm certainly open to whatever works for the Board. Thank you.
Members, you've heard the request from the Superintendent about next Wednesday. How are y'all's schedules?
I'm good.
Yeah, that works.
Next Wednesday? Do we have a, can we have it at a day when we actually have a meeting? Do we have a meeting on Wednesday?
Great question, Mr. Browning. And no, typically, we always try to do that, but because there's a work session today, there's not one next week, and likewise with the Board meeting, so.
And actually, next Wednesday's our scheduled time for.
Briefings, so.
We would have had that time, that we would have been meeting here anyway, so.
Right.
I don't have any conflicts. Ms. King?
I do not.
Ms. Thor?
I don't want to wait. It's really important.
Right.
Mr. Browning?
Yeah, I believe I have a conflict, but I'll go along with what the Board decides.
I don't have a conflict. I'd agree, I don't want to wait. And the other thing, I purposefully do not like them on days when we also have a work session or a Board meeting, because we never know how long those meetings will go, and I like to be fresh in the room. We know we've been there when it's been long and dragging, and we're, so it would really, in my opinion, be good if we didn't have it on a day.
So next Wednesday, 9:00? Everybody get it 9:00?
That's for me.
Mr. Browning, I guess if we have to, maybe call you in or something. All right?
And if it helps to that point, thank you Chair. We have a very full agenda on the 15th. I don't think the Board would want to wait, but if you should consider waiting, it's a very full agenda on the 15th.
We don't, we don't, this is too important to wait. We need to move.
Right. Okay. So thank you very much.
And you also talked about Board meeting times. I think we talked about, are you talking about the alternation of the meetings?
That's correct. I just made a note to myself with the calendar that we would revisit that by the end, the last Board meeting of this month, when the Board last discussed it. So if there's, whatever the pleasure of the Board is to revisit that, I just want to be able to plan ahead for notification purposes.
Okay. Ms. Thor?
Thank you Chair. Dr. Gullett, it will be important for me as a Board member to know how your staff is feeling about the alternating schedule, because you know they're so integral to our process.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
We need their input as well, because they're the ones that's been being here with us as well, so thank you. Ms. Thor? Mr. Browning?
Yes. I am very in favor of our normal evening meetings for Board meetings. And the reason is, people can get here. It typically works. And I have had zero requests for early Board meetings, and many comments about the difficult, difficulty of dealing with getting places in the morning and also coming here, you know, and participating where it just doesn't work. So I'm 100% in favor, and have seen early morning vacancy, just people aren't here. And so I'm 100% in favor of the normal 5:30 program, date, time.
Thank you Board Member Browning. I'm sure, I'm sure, go ahead.
Excuse me. Yes, the Board Member Browning raises a good point. I think that it would be important maybe to look at our data, and with evening participation as opposed to morning participation, and just see where we are. There's always a lot to consider in decisions like this.
Exactly. And I'm sure we're going to have some spirited discussion about it, and have a lot of information coming back. And we do have the rest of this month to consider and think about it. So Superintendent, if you can bring it to, I guess, the last work session of this month, prior to our last Board meeting, and we can talk about it then.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have to vote on it? So should it be at a Board meeting?
Well, we voted on it to put it in, so I think we should talk about it in the work session, then vote at the next.
On the agenda?
At the next meeting.
I think we voted on to do the experiment.
Yes.
And then move forward.
And revisit.
And so, I think it should be voted on, because it was voted on when we did the experiment to do a trial.
And I will note for the Board that the pilot program is voted to extend through September. The Board may wish to look at its annual meeting schedule at a time at which, or may wish to make a final decision on its schedule at a time when it has its organizational meeting. Because at the organizational meeting is the trigger time that we're required to report to the state our meetings for the year anyway. And so if that is not inconvenient for anyone else's scheduling, that may be the appropriate time to do so.
All right.
This had a cap to it, didn't it not? There was a cap to the experiment?
There was a data revision pilot. It was revision, a date to come back and look at, revisit it.
And that would change one meeting in October.
Right.
If we went back to a, at the end of September, if we went back to our prior schedule, it would alter one meeting to an evening meeting as opposed to a daytime meeting. And then, you know, we could do that and then decide in November whether to, given, if everyone has the facts and circumstances at that time, then making a final decision at our organizational meeting to set up our.
To continue.
Long-term continuation or deletion of that.
Right. So how far, where do we stand in terms of the, what have we already decided on?
We decided that there would be a pilot program that continues.
And through, through September?
I don't have the immediate, at my fingertips, the information on that. I mean, I can look it up, but it was through the end of September, I believe.
James Lopez, you have it?
September 27.
It's September 27.
And then after that, we would, based on our vote, return to the October, in October, return to the meetings unless the Board chose to do otherwise. Return to October meetings that were alternating. And if we chose then either not to do that, or if we chose in November at our organizational meeting to restructure, then essentially that would, that would alter a meeting at the end of October, or actually, looks like probably the 11th of October, and it might also alter the first meeting in November. So that's completely within the Board's purview.
So we have one more? Is that, that's what I'm getting, one more at this juncture, and then we will decide?
No.
No? The 27th?
The 13th is a 5:30 p.m. School Board meeting.
Okay.
The 27th is a 9:00 School Board meeting.
Okay.
Then in October, there are a total of, well, I'm sorry, there are two School Board meetings, both at 5:30.
Okay. That's where I was referring, so there's one more of.
The 11th and the 25th. So if we, unless we voted to do otherwise, we would keep both of those at 5:30.
Right.
One more at 9:00 is what, that's.
Currently, yes.
Currently, the final meeting for this month will be at 9:00 a.m., unless we decide to continue with the alternating schedule.
Right, but we would vote on it and what.
Correct.
So people would know, we have one more of these experimental, and then we go.
Pilot.
They'll go forward.
Pilot.
I'll use my, I use experimental, that's what we were, that's what we were doing. But, so, we have one of those, and then we go forward. That's what I'm trying to.
And then our organizational meeting is on November 22nd.
November 22nd, and is that the time for the new Board?
It is. They are sworn in that day, and that's the day we have the organizational meeting.
And that's when we decide on the times. We have to address it then?
Correct.
With the new Board that'll be living with that?
Correct.
Okay.
That's good. That's clear, and so people can rely on it.
All right. So we'll be talking about this towards the end of the month, and see where we go from there. All right, Superintendent?
That concludes my briefing. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Powers?
Yes, sir. Good morning, and I thank you for, I managed to steal an entire work session here for my purposes here. But what we've got primarily today, we wanted to discuss the sort of the status of Neola policy updates, so that you know what's coming for the future. And I'm going to stop calling them Neola policy updates, because they are our updates now. Neola helped us get here. Neola then helps to provide us with additional information, and provide us with proposed updates, but they really, we own them, so they're ours. So Board policy updates. We have four broad areas in which we need to make updates. And I've given you guys just a copy of my notes, so please excuse any scrivener's errors you may find in there, but these are my notes regarding Neola's policy update needs. We identified with staff so far, a number of policies. You'll see that first section there. Following policies have clerical errors. These are minor of substance and not form. These are things where there was literally a word that needs to be changed, not that doesn't really affect the meeting, meaning, things of that nature. There was, in some references, to policies that don't exist, things of that nature. So we just, we're going to do some strike-throughs and some fixes. Now, because this was all publicly noticed, I, even though I could go through and immediately say, "These are scrivener's errors, I'm fixing them," and that's generally what's permitted by courts everywhere, in an abundance of caution, the smart thing to do is, I identify those, bring them to the Board and say, "Here's what I would fix. All the Board agree, these are not substantive changes, and we're just going to fix them." And if that's the case, then those sections, that section is completed. As to the second section, there was one policy which needs rulemaking immediately, and that was, there was an error. In 8405, School Safety and Security, when we got done with it, after having looked at it, reviewed it, got it back to staff, got it to Neola, got it back to us, got it back to staff, got it to Neola, that process, it failed to get put into the policy manual publication. Neola admitted it was just a mistake. And therefore, since it's already gone through the rule development process, it just needs to be placed back in. And so it's advertised for the 927 Agenda, we've already moved on to that, and the Board has already approved the text of what it is that we wish to put in there. However, this will provide adequate notice to all of the public and ensure that we're doing things by the rules for placing it back in. In other words, none of us noticed that it didn't make it into the final policy manual because of all of the vast quantities of information that's there, but it should have been. So you've already reviewed it, and you look at it again, so long as there's no further discussion, we vote on it, move it right into the policy manual, and then if it needs updates or any future tweaks to, you know, further make it fit our needs, then we can do so at another policy update in the future. We have five areas that may require rule development or rulemaking as soon as possible if we determine that they are needed as policies and not procedures. Now, two of them, if you recall, the drug-free workplace policies, we have had one in effect. We declined to accept the one that was from Neola, just because our language is written into a number of contracts and things of that nature, but otherwise is generally good. Now, the drug-free workplace items, it was brought to my attention, that those may need to be discussed with union members during a union negotiation, or maybe union representatives. So because there is a perception that at least could impact workplace environment. And they had in the past indicated that there was some information that they wished to perhaps update in a policy. If we're going to do any of that, then that's something that, an item that would require negotiation if we're going to make any substantial alterations. So those two are waiting on a union negotiation. We have a policy in place. The policy is the same as it always has been. If we're going to alter it, then we choose to alter it based on whatever those are. Now, I will tell you that we did make alterations and address and update our policy that specifically applies to CDL staff and things like that. That's all shiny new, all done. So that's, that was something the Board took care of some time ago. But as to those other more routine policies, those are ones that will get information or updates or input, if any, from union members. Now, I will note that all of these meetings are publicly noticed, and any teacher, staff member, person can come and address things here. They don't have to wait for, you know, their particular representative to do so, but if they choose to, they certainly may. The other three that are grievance process, that was Proposed Policy 3470. And we had some discussion with the Board about whether that was something that was better for, to remain within procedures, which the Superintendent and her office are working on now.
Can I interrupt a minute, Chair? May I? On the one we're leaving?
Yes, sir.
The earlier one? May I?
You've done it. Go ahead.
No, no, I'm asking.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Please.
Okay, thank you. What you were just addressing with the union, and the union does not make policy.
That's correct. However, the standard rule is that where there is any alteration of our policy which substantially affects working environment, then those are items which may be required, in fact, generally are required, to be discussed with and negotiated with the union.
By whom?
Now.
Who's that, when you say required? Who is requiring?
We have, we have staff who do exactly that.
No, no, the requirement.
Federal law.
Okay. Excuse me. I'm asking, who, who requires that we go to essentially a veto position or a new?
Yes, sir. Organizations like the NLRB, the National Labor Relations Board, and, and union contract law. Union contract law with the federal government controls nearly all, occupies nearly the entire field of union negotiations. However, we do also have state law, and there's a number of statutes, as well as federal and state, that control those items. So it's required that if something affects, if there is at least something that has a, that has a reasonably anticipated impact on working conditions, which their modifications, their proposed modifications may, or our proposed modifications may. The difference is, if they have proposed modifications, this Board is the arbiter of those and decides. If we have proposed modifications, then we have to do an analysis of whether or not it may impact working conditions. And those can be little items, or they can be big items, I mean, small things or large things.
But that's on us. We set the policy. The, we do not have, we do not set policy through, a union does not set policy. We set the policy. They can, they can input to us, but that's it, right? I mean, is that, that's my understanding?
That's correct, but let me.
Am I hearing it correctly from you?
Yes, let me make sure you're also interpreting correctly. What I, what I mean is that if, for example, tomorrow, we were to make a decision, not that we would or ever have or anything like that, but we made a decision that we were going to take some action which inarguably affected and impacted everyone's working conditions. I mean, let's say physically, we decided we're going to turn off the air conditioning in all schools, or, you know, something, something significant. If we were to do something like that, that impacts working conditions. If it impacts working conditions, the union has a bar, has in their contract certain items they've already bargained for. That bargained-for agreement is, it in fact supersedes most of our policy. If it's a bargained-for agreement, then we can't violate that agreement. So if within our bargained-for agreement, any of our policies show up, and we wish to make an alternate, alteration to those policies, then we have to do a determination of whether those policies, in fact, are minor edits, or whether they actually impact the working conditions. With drug-free workplace policies, those generally come in, in the sense that they may impact disciplinary procedures and things of that nature, the ability of people to challenge, you know, discipline that might be handed down to them. Those sort of factors can be implicated. And because of that, we got to make sure that if we're gonna, if we're going to change those policies, that they have had a, a opportunity to negotiate those. Rather than coming to the Board and simply speaking, that's something the Board takes in a more official negotiation position with them in order to achieve that, just like our union contracts do. Everything from pay to working conditions to leave provisions, to all those items or things that we deal with via negotiation with our unions.
So Attorney Powers, basically, we have to just move this along. Basically, we have to take in consideration any collective bargaining agreements that we already have.
Yes, sir.
When we decide to alter a policy or create a policy or whatever, we have to take those collective bargaining agreements into consideration.
Yes, sir. Because we can't alter that without perhaps running afoul of it and breaching an agreement.
And it's not that the union is dictating it, but we, they've already negotiated those things.
Right. If I negotiate something with you, and then I reneg on the negotiation, that's a bad thing. So.
Yes. Okay, so categorically, and this is important, we set policy. That's what we do. And policy, by definition, impacts all employees, the entire operation of the district. By definition, categorically, right?
Well, I'm going to encourage you not to take the position that every policy we have affects working conditions.
Yeah, it does. It does.
I disagree.
Well, our policy, our policy that this Board would set would impact the operation of this school district.
Some do. And in fact, whether it impacts the operation of the school district, is it something that we've already collectively bargained for in the past? If your predecessor put into place a negotiated contract with the union that allowed for a certain disciplinary procedure to be followed, and you agreed to that when you signed on, or the teacher agreed to that when they signed on, or a staff member agreed to that when they signed on, then our alteration of that en masse, by changing policy, we change it for everyone, that could, that could be a breach of that contract. And I don't think that any of the issues that we're talking about here today, because we're, it sounds, now that we're talking about it, it sounds probably bigger than it is, but any of the discussions that we're, we might have regarding this, are abundance of caution things because of the fact that there are certain, there are certain policies within drug-free workplace which are, which are required to be in a number of contract provisions. And if we're going to substantially alter those, it is our obligation as a Board, your obligation as a Board, mine as your attorney, to ensure that we are not altering the substance of what they've agreed to when they took on the job. Does that make sense?
I hear you talking. However, I, just going back fundamentally, categorically, going back to the statement that this Board sets policy as long as the union is happy with it? Is that what you're saying?
No, I think that's.
Or negotiates.
I think.
Negotiates the position. In other words, I would like, I would like to be able to categorically say that this Board sets policy. And then, anything that shakes out of that policy could be brought to the Board, either by a representative, by public, by any means. But I'm just, I'm just saying that, that this Board either sets policy at the approval of a union or doesn't. You know, if we do it that way, then I think we have to say that we set policy based on agreement by a union.
Yes, sir. Well, what we have is the, it's, it's not that the Board has to be second-guessed by the union on everything. It is that when we enter, we're required, there are certain classes of employees who are required to have contracts under Florida law. Teachers are one, okay? When they have a union contract with us, we have terms of that contract. Now, if from day one, our terms were simply, "We're not promising you anything other than a paycheck, and you work completely at will, and there is nothing whatsoever that we're going to guarantee you," then I guess that that would, I guess that would probably pass muster if we changed anything we wanted to under the sun. However, in the event that we have a contract, which is a meaningful contract and has, has the terms and conditions of their working here, if we wish to change those, they're entitled to notice, and they're entitled to the opportunity to be heard. And so we go to them. We haven't even presented them with our proposed alterations. We just know that in order to update some of our, some of our contract provisions there, it may, some of them may alter things in a way that many of them find favorable, and some groups may find. and some groups may find that they're not favorable. That, that's completely up to them.
Attorney Powers, I think clarity is with this is in our Florida statute 447.309, section three, which talks about those particular things, which would help us, may help Board Member Browning in understanding that, that the union is not dictating anything, but if we already have agreements, if we already have agreements with them, we have to take in consideration, we, we have to take that in consideration when we implement policies.
And, and I would agree, I would agree, but I think it's important that we have a basic fundamental understanding that the board sets policy.
That's, that's a correct statement.
And we do have agreements, we do have agreements with students, for example. We have agreements with all employees, whether they're involved in a union or they're not involved in a union, any employee. Uh, we have agreements, uh, with, uh, with, with the city of Ocala, with, uh, others, the city of Bellevue, let's say. We have a, we have a lot of agreements. Uh, and, but we set the policy. We do not negotiate on the possibility that these people would, or we do not set our policy on the basis that somebody would object to our policy.
Correct. But if our policy tomorrow becomes, for example, and I'm just gonna, this is just an analogy, but if our policy tomorrow becomes, we're only paying eighty percent on the dollar for products, don't you think vendors would be rather upset about that? We're, we're only going to pay you eighty percent of what we agreed to. Vendors would-
You would have objection. You would have-
Not objection, we'd be in breach of contract.
Okay, well-
And so, that's, that's what I'm, that's, that's the point here, is that we are certainly entitled. You're correct. We set the policy.
Yes.
And the cards fall where they may on that. However, where we have an existing contract, and the union contract is an example.
Or any contract.
We can't ju- any, any contract.
Any contract with anyone.
We simply can't just breach the contract.
Well, why would it be a breach? In other words, I'm, I'm just saying-
Because there's an existing, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
Well, well, if, if we set policy, it could breach any contract we have with any party.
If we have contracted for that particular item.
Yeah. And, and, and that's, of course, it'd have to be germane. All right. So, we set policy. We do not check with everyone that they're happy with it. And I'm just saying, I, look, I'm, I'm one board member, uh, but, but I would like, I would not like to set that precedent, uh, that we check with one party, that we might have, let's just for the sake of discussion, we have fifty parties that we have contracts with. And so, we're saying that we cannot set policy without checking with those fifty, uh, organizations that we, or entities that we have, um, contracts with? Is that what you're saying?
If our policy alteration will-
If it does.
Will materially affect-
But who knows?
What is agreed.
Who knows?
Well, that, that's-
Why are we having this conversation?
Right. Because drug-free workplace will signif- could potentially significantly alter what we already have in place. I think the issue at hand, I'm sorry if I interrupted anyone, but I think the issue at hand is, this isn't an either-or. So, we're saying, yes, the school board makes policy.
Okay.
Or, the, and, and I believe you're trying to make it an either-or. The, or the union tries to say what, and it's not an either-or scenario.
No, I'm just saying straight-
But, bear with me just a moment. It, it's not an either-or, it's a yes-and. It's, yes, the school board dictates policy, creates policy.
Yes.
And we negotiate with those parties that in fact, policy will impact, including our employees. That's why we have three different unions that are under federal and state statute that they have collective bargaining legal rights to. And so, while we have to, yes, set policy, we also have to, and, ensure that our policy does not impact or alter what we've already negotiated collectively bargained with those unions to the impact that it's so significant that they believe we would be in breach of contract. And that then, in fact, would be illegal for us to do, based on federal contract collective bargaining law.
Most likely where we would see that in a situation like we have here, is that in areas, we're, again, exercising abundance of caution here because of the fact that these are areas, drug-free workplace is an area that, that can impact employee disciplinary procedures, and making sure that all of their constitutional rights are protected. And done so with the proper authority, and with the proper notice and opportunity to be heard and other things guaranteed by the Constitution. And so, therefore, if we're going to make an alteration, and my impression is that there, that we're going to make alterations that they are going to be happy with, and we're going to be happy with, because we're updating some policies that have old language that doesn't really match very well. However, it requires us to sit down at the table. That's what the union negotiations part is. We sit down at the table and we say, here is the, uh, here's the proposed policy. We don't see any problem with it. Do you? And then they say, yes, or no, or here's our problem with it. And they might say, well, I think that in this situation, this might occur. And we say, well, okay, well, maybe we can restructure that to do this. Our negotiations are something that, that help make that process one whereby we are able to interact with our employees in a way that is-
Non-union, non-union employees, let's just say.
Well, if they're non-union employ-
Students.
Well, they're not employees, but-
No, but students, let's just say students, they're gonna be impacted by it. Uh, let's just say, instead of it's hypothetical, let's just say, uh, we are dealing with hypothetically a marijuana is not allowed on campus. And we notice that a, a variation of marijuana, marijuana oil, and so we say marijuana oil is not, uh, and I don't know if there is such a thing, but let's say there's marijuana oil is not allowed. Now, that would impact students, uh, all employees, and unions. Wouldn't unions then come, if they had an, an objection to, to it? Wouldn't they then come and mount that objection? But we would set the policy, would we not?
Yes, but I, I, those would be, that, that's dealing with an issue of illegality versus legality, so that's not really-
Drug-free, drug-free workplace, and I'm just going there as cleanly as I can go there. I, I'm only making a point. This is a, this is fundamental to who sets policy. It's the board, and we do not do it under, uh, vendors who might, you know, say we set a policy of eighty percent. We're only gonna do eighty percent of the contracts. It would seem a little silly to do that, because we would have an awful lot of feedback to us.
Not only that, we'd have an awful lot of lawsuits.
Lawsuits. Let's say we did. Let's say we did. But, but the principle that we set the policy, and we would be responsible for the policy we set, would be correct. We don't, we don't farm that out to everybody ahead of time. I mean, it's a public meeting, right? Am I, I'm, this is a real fundamental thing. I mean, I'm, I'm not arguing that the, that they would not have the right to come in and say cannabis, oil, is, we have a real objection to that, and we use it for cooking or something. Yeah, I don't know, whatever it is. But I think we have policy where we could do that. Where they could come and make an objection. I mean, that would be real simple.
And, and I'm, I'm sorry to interject here, but I, I mean, I think that your point is, students, if we have policy that impacts students, do they have the ability to make an objection? The answer to that is absolutely one hundred percent yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Because we had, I think, eleven or twelve, maybe seventeen meetings, I can't remember what the total number was, where we were talking about every one of these policies publicly before we approved them. Every single policy that this district now has in place, that this board has recently approved, many of those meetings occurred in the summertime. Many of those be, when students absolutely, if they, if their parents had objections to what we were, they all had the ability, in a public meeting, public forum, to come and object if that were the case.
And the unions as well.
And unions as well. The difference is, that union negotiators have the ability also to see the ins and outs of the contracts. There's a separate contract that is a legally binding document that's separate and apart from what we have with students. With students, we have the code of student conduct. That's essentially the contract we go into with parents and students. That also was public. That also was an opportunity for, but with the union contract, that is not a public document. Or as pub, it's not something that we're talking about in public. Something we have shade meetings to talk about. So, I, I mean, I think that absolutely anyone who has an objection, objection to our policy had the ability publicly to come and object. But that's the difference in the union negotiations versus the students and others that, the contract that we're in with students is the code of student conduct.
Well, this board member just, uh, just on record, uh, would say that the board makes policy. Anybody has objection to that can bring it forward, but we do not check with anyone, uh, to make our policy. I would say that our policy is competent. We make our policy, and we go forward. I, I just think fundamentally that that's the way it has to be. I, and, and I may be, you know, I, I see blank faces here, but, uh, you know, like, what, what?
It's hilarious. You're not seeing a blank face.
Well, I, I mean-
You're the board that understands the process. And, and, and all due respect, I think maybe you don't quite understand the process of it. So, maybe, I would like to see this board move forward, and then if Mr. Browning, if you would like to have this discussion further with our attorney, or whoever, to learn more about this process, I would like to suggest that.
I'm comfortable with it. I just say, I just believe that this board, I think fundamentally, legally, sets policy. Case closed. Done. That's it.
Okay.
Now, something else you might do, fine, but that's, that's what this board member's saying.
Okay.
It's, it's that simple.
Attorney Powers?
Yes, sir. Your point, your point is well taken.
Thank you.
Um, the other two policies, um, one is for animals. Uh, this is specifically for service animals. We do have a policy regarding things that might include like animals on campus for educational events, or animals, classroom pet, things like that, but it's, it's very brief. It simply says they must be, um, properly housed, caged, maintained, all those sort of things. Um, however, specifically as to service animals, some boards choose to do this by way of policy, and some choose to do it by way of procedure. There may be some, um, or sorry, some staff decide to do it by way of procedure. Um, the ESE department would obviously need to be involved. There is very clear guidance from, uh, state and federal authorities on exactly what the terms and conditions are regarding ser- service animals, and also as to the, um, what counts as a service animal is one of the biggest things, um, and their use within schools. There are also a couple of national, nationwide organizations which provide certification for service animals that, that are very specific on this point. And those would all go into building their, in fact, model policies on point. We can use a model policy and update it to our particular needs, but most of them, because there's such clear guidance, are extremely similar. Uh, the main point is, there's a difference between a service animal and a therapeutic animal. Uh, a service animal is an animal that's trained for a specific task, has received that specific training, and then that animal is utilized for that training and has been tested. So, not just, you know, uh, I mean, I don't intend to make light, but you can't have an emotional support parakeet that you bring to class unless, it, it's, under Florida law, there's also things like, uh, uh-
Correct.
What kinds of animals and everything else.
Species-specific?
Yeah, it's everything from, there's a lot of detail, but everything from species-specific to the type of training that's required, the specific task, that it's within a student's IEP, um, or five oh four plan, um, those sort of factors all go into the mix. So, that is something where we can submit, uh, if chosen, a, a, um, a proposed policy. It's not very difficult, um, and it's not particularly, I don't think, controversial. Uh, or it can also be done via procedure, but at any rate, I'll present the board with a model policy, in which case we can set it and, and go. The final one was as to a religion policy. This board has never actually had an actual religion policy in the past. Um, we did have a controversial issues in education policy, um, which has been updated within our, our new policies as well. Um, and that just talked about if we're going to teach any particular topic which may have, uh, you know, specific controversy, and that's according directly to Florida statute, here's how it's handled. Um, and, uh, you know, there are, of course, when the Neola policy was presented, the model policy that we saw, unlike nearly every other policy, this reads like an entire Supreme Court, like, not even Supreme Court, just a, just a legal treatise of, here's all the different Supreme Court positions, and here's where federal law positions are on it. There are literal, and I own some of them, books on religion and education, and where it impacts, and it's, it's a difficult thing altogether. We can choose not to adopt a specific policy that tries to cover every eventuality, because if you ask me to do that, I will tell you that although I will do a very good job, in my opinion, I will fail at being able to cover every possible-
Correct.
Means and topic that might be included. So, the point of a policy is to provide some guidance to the public and to our staff about how things are supposed to run in a particular area. Um, I don't know how much we can accomplish by doing that with a religion policy, but I, I have drafted already some, some broad ideas, and it's just a question of whether or not this board wishes to try to incorporate those, knowing that as soon as I do, there's, it, it's not that it's a field in constant change, it's just that there's too many fact-specific situations. So-
Sure.
We don't have to have one. We can have one, or we can choose to stay out of that fray.
Mr. Browning?
Yes. Uh, what would, uh, how, how, how would it, uh, fit in, in what you've worked on, just the constitutional, uh, separation of church and state? I mean, you just follow that, otherwise, otherwise you may get into, let's say, Yisoka Gukai, or Baptist, or Catholic, or that, whatever, the content-
Let me-
That would be un, un-
Yeah, let me see how concisely I can put this. In many ways, it would, there's, there's a, there's a large, it, there's, essentially, student-led prayer practices within the classroom. Students are absolutely free. We have to be careful about in any way, um, providing anything that can be deemed to be influencing-
Right.
Or coercion of students toward any particular viewpoint.
Or restrictive.
Or restrictive. We cannot restrict, and we cannot, um-
We leave it alone.
Yeah. I, I mean, essentially, that's what it boils down to. We can, we can have a policy on it, or we can not have a policy on it. I think that in any fact-specific situation, the best thing we can do is, I know that teachers, when I went through my education training, and most of anyone who has, they discuss this topic, and it's something that after a while, it's just, you, you, you get an understanding that there's a big yellow zone you have to figure out and deal with in any fact-specific situation.
Wouldn't procedure be able to handle, like superintendent, just, just be able to handle any, you know, like, for example, the, the, the school district, the superintendent would decide the content, uh, of use of an hour in a classroom? What the content would be?
Yes, I think we already have-
And then we handle it. If there's something that comes back, then we address that, you know, legally or otherwise.
I think we already have a lot of that in place, but, um, to your point, I don't think that the, I don't think that we could all, I, I, just as clearly as we couldn't write policy, trying to write procedures on that is diff- different. I think instead, it needs to be something that employees are likely, and I'll defer to the superintendent, those are her employees, as to staff identifying particular areas of need and going through whatever training they need to do to be fluent in that. And then escalating to their school principal and up the administrative chain to be able to appropriately and timely respond to those questions, which might, and which certainly can involve the legal department as well, you know, with it, that we will ensure that everyone's rights are respected and treated equally.
Yeah, and that isn't a policy issue that, other than it, you have a procedural issue. It's just the way it is.
Right. So, I, I, since I brought your name up, I'll give you an opportunity to respond if you choose to, Superintendent?
Certainly, I'm, agreed. Um, to Attorney Powers' point, sometimes there doesn't need to be a procedure so much as a clarification of the policy, right? So, we, we do have procedures for a lot of guidance, but sometimes just a clarification of the policy is, is what's needed. I think particularly in this case, that is, that is the case. Um, where procedure is needed, we create it.
And where policy on a particular item doesn't exist, uh, in general, a, a briefing or report, um, that, that broadly outlines some, some issues for staff and, uh, may, may be appropriate. And, you know, for that matter, you know, for- And, you know, for that matter, you know, for the public as well.
I'm open, I'm open to receiving anything like that.
We're, Mr. Campbell.
That's all I was gonna say. This board member would be interested in seeing what you've drafted.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and just for the record, saying the separation of church and state is in the Constitution is not accurate. It was a letter written by Thomas Jefferson. It is not in the Constitution, granted, the Supreme Courts in 1962 and 1963 used that as a portion of what they did in Abington School District versus Shump, et cetera. But our recent Kennedy versus Broomerton, 2022, uh, school, a Supreme Court ruling in favor of the coach who did have prayer on the football field potentially would warrant us to at least have conversation about what you've drafted. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We do understand that this drafting of what we're asking Attorney to do is not gonna be comprehensive of every.
Can't be.
It can't be. And I don't, I hope that we're not expecting it to be. It's going to be pretty surf, because when we started dealing with this, this topic, and I think we getting ready to go down a rabbit hole, I'm just being honest, I think we getting ready to go down something. It is, it's, it's too broad, too vast to, to try to bring it all into just one thing. And I think where we are, we just need to kind of leave it alone, but I'm open to talking about it, so.
Right. And, uh, the concise way to put it is, don't coerce and don't suppress.
Correct.
You know?
I like what you've said. I can support that. Another, that's, that's my point exactly, that we don't go down that rabbit hole and start getting into this huge policy issue on the multitude of religions that, that could come into the.
Correct.
Thank you.
Because when you open it up for one, be careful, you gotta open it up for all. And that's.
And all is infinite. You, who, who are you gonna offend?
Exactly.
You know? How are you gonna handle that?
All right. Attorney?
Okay, the final portion, um, is a portion which, um, is a required process. It's legislative updates to Neola policies. During the last portion of some of our policy updates, we, uh, we were no longer going back each time because it was taking some time and going back to every policy revision that might need to be done to a policy we had addressed many months or perhaps even in some cases, years ago. So when we put this into place, I warned the board that we would come to a time soon after the first set of policy or when we ready set, first set of policy updates, in which Neola had identified legislative areas or areas that were unclear, that needed further clarification or to be compliant with either administrative codes, Florida statutes or federal law. And they have done so. And their report comes back to, and I've included some of that here, uh, there's 172 policies. And so there's a lot. However, uh, nearly everything there, I don't claim to have gone through every line item, but in doing a sampling, uh, everything that I have seen so far has been extremely responsive to a specific alteration of the law or further interpretation of the law, in which case it is just something that needs to be, needs to be updated. So these are things that the board can certainly view, look at, determine whether those items are, you know, you, you have further clarifications to, but I would say that at, at minimum, we need to accept most likely, and I'll, I'll be able to determine, uh, this in the future, but most likely all of these. And you may in some instances have suggestions for further clarification to them. However, just to stay legal, these are the 172 that we have to update. And that's, uh, listed, starting on the first page of my notes and going through, uh, page, I think it's seven, I'm sorry, page eight.
So right now, what we need to do is have some dates so we can kind of get this going. I guess, Board, um, we need to have some special work sessions or, um, because we know, we know how lengthy that process can be, and we don't want to open this whole thing back all the way up. We can deal with these 172.
And I will tell you two things. Number one is that we, as to the one that was a critical need and the one that was, uh, clerical errors, those first two areas I spoke of, for the 927 agenda, we're providing that, we've already provided the notice, we're there, we can get that one in. And as to the others, I simply need the board to be able to look at my proposed revisions and say, these are okay, because they're Scrivener's errors, they're just clerical stuff. Those can happen very rapidly, um, probably in less time than we've already spent here today. The third one is, um, rulemaking and development. Those are sort of add-on items that we decide whether or not we wish to do. That's gonna require discussion of the board at a work session. That doesn't depend on the schedule for Neola folks to be here, it can, it's just a conversation between us and the public and the board. And then as to these updates, um, once we know what they are and I have provided all of you with all of them, then at that point, we can see if there's anything, and I will give you a briefing as to whether there's anything within these that I believe is an area we would not wish to adopt, but, um, so far, as I say, everything appears to be things that we just need to, it's routine maintenance sort of stuff, so. Okay?
Chair.
I thought Ms. Campbell's.
Um, I, I was just gonna say, I'd, I'd know that, you know, I'm not certain if Neola has to be here again, like what you just said, but I know several other school districts have already just gone through this because they've already implemented many of these changes that we're, we've been awaiting, um, from Neola. So sooner rather than later, as far as I'm concerned, if it warrants an extra work session, so be it. 172 policies sounds like a lot, but frankly, it's really not whenever you think of how this language change impacts this policy, this policy, this policy, and because of how we have our policy set up, it may not be quite as significant as it sounds.
And if you all remember back to when we were reviewing these policies, the nice policies that were easy to deal with were the ones that we looked at and we said, yep, that's statutory. I mean, that's, that's word for word, that goes there, that's in response to this. This isn't language we created or we had some opinion on or we were trying to set an agenda, this is just, that's, needs to be there. So, uh, so far, everything I've seen is, is very much in that vein. So if there are any outliers from that, then I'll certainly let the board know and you can decide what you want to do.
Mr. Browning?
Yes. Um, uh, speak to the implementation of the policy. I have noticed a, I'm, I'm gonna call it due process, uh, for lack of a better term, but, uh, even representation of both parties in an issue, uh, the implementation of policy. Have we, has that been updated? I, I know Neola has a, a, a big, uh, uh, following, a lot of clients. Has that been addressed? The, because we, when you, once you start with a policy, it's required that you have a policy. And then if you have a breach of that policy, uh, there's an accusation, let's say it's a referral. And at that point, the, the implementation or the enforcement of the policy, uh, in terms of due process, uh, have we updated that? Is that?
I can pull that out separately for you, um, because that is a, the things that you're talking about, when it comes to due process regarding employee complaints, there are some pretty specific.
Well, any policy.
Guidance there. But when it comes to students and due process and notice and opportunity to be heard and all that, that's not at all within any of the stuff that we're doing through Neola. That is a code of student conduct issue. So that would be the direction to go. Now, some of our policies, say for example, you know, that possession of, of certain substances and everything, but it doesn't speak to the referral procedure, as you mentioned, or those kind of things, that's all a separate, that's separate from our policy manual. Now, we'll point out that Florida statute does make the code of student conduct upon adoption by the board is one of the board's policies. So it's true that it's a board policy. However, it's not, um, it's not within the function or purview of Neola to sort of tinker with those. That's something that we deal with separately and that's a good thing because I'm telling you, those are, those are two very large areas to deal with. So one can be easily removed from the other, looked at, reviewed and revised as we see fit. That's the code of student conduct. So that's sort of like taking the part out and rebuilding that part if you want to increase the performance in that part and putting that part back in. That's, that's, that's the code of student conduct. The whole car, on the other hand, might be policies in general.
Right. Policies in general, uh, uh, if you can categorically set, we have a policy, we implement that policy. The implementation is their due process, like that. And, and, you know, to, to contain the, the, uh, the comment or the inquiry by this board member. I would like to see that, uh, because the policy could be innocuous or wonderful. It, it could be detrimental or incredibly positive. But the, uh, the implementation, the enforcement could be a problem. And so no policy until it gets used, if you will. Gasoline could be horrible, you put it in the engine and it just doesn't work. But alone, I guess it's okay because you're not actually using it, implementing it. So the, the idea of due process and in the implementation or the enforcement of any policy with, at, at any level, with any student, with any employee, with, with the general public, with, with whomever, uh, that is, have, have we addressed that? I haven't seen it addressed. The implementation of the policy and the enforcement.
Well, people have different levels of procedural due process rights depending upon the, you know, depending upon the situation, what is the potential that, uh, that they, what's the right that's involved? So there's.
But do we have one?
In general, well, in general, the overall overarching structure of the law, which all of our policies have to comply with, is that, just like I mentioned with all these policies, we have to do rulemaking and development. And part of that is, is because we have law that says that, um, if we're, if any agency, including a school district, intends to make a alteration to a policy that substantially affects the public, um, this might even be back to sort of your analogy before, if we intend to make any alteration, um, we don't get to just do it and say, live with it. We have to say, um, notice and opportunity to be heard. So, uh, we have to go through rulemaking and development, which has expanded advertising times and gives us the opportunity to, uh, set a hearing, a public hearing for anyone who may wish to speak on the matter. So those, that process is required. And then only at the end of that process can we change it. So for example, even with board policies, you know, um, if we, it, it would not be, and I know this was not your point, so don't get me wrong, but I, it would not be sufficient to say like, right here, right now, we suddenly decide we don't like this policy, we're just gonna throw this policy out, or you know what, we need a policy on this, we're just gonna decide it right here, right now. We can't do that. Even though we are the district who has the policies and we're in control of our policies, there's a requirement.
We have a process.
Right. And the process is a requirement that there's notice and opportunity to be heard, public involvement and all those factors. So, um, notice and opportunity to be heard is the core of due process. So depending upon the due process right that's involved, it may be that, um, that someone has, requires notice and opportunity to be heard and not anything particularly more than that, or there may be an actual requirement for a number of steps leading up through and to, you know, appeals to outside agencies or appeals to the court system or any number of factors. So in general, procedural due process isn't controlled by us except that we have to at minimum ensure that in every situation, if someone is an affected person by the policy, then they're provided with notice and an opportunity to be heard. Now, whether or not there even needs to be a response or what the nature of that response is, that depends upon the situation, so.
Well, that's the implementation. And so, uh, now, I'm not talking about how we make policy, I'm talking about, once we have policy, how it's implemented and is it implemented fairly? Is there a single way, like both parties are addressed and have the same rights? That's, that's, that's what I'm talking about. Like, because you can use, a policy can be used as a shield or a sword, depending on, you know, it's very arbitrary at that point. If in fact, there is no policy for, if there's a referral written, uh, for an employee, uh, against an employee or against a student, let's say, there's, there's a, uh, there's a, let's just call it a referral. Is the representation on both sides?
Yes, sir. For example, with suspension, this may be, um, this may elucidate your point, we, we, for a suspension versus an expulsion, if there's a verbal warning or even a suspension, our code of student conduct outlines that if there's a referral and it doesn't lead to expulsion or anything like that, but a student receives a referral, it outlines details for how that can proceed through the process. If the parents wish to contest that, the parents or student have to contact the principal within three days and indicate that they're going to do that. That's the, the, there are reciprocal obligations for timing and things like that. You can't just say a year down the line, I'm gonna contest it. So, um, a referral is written, there's a certain period of time by which they have to respond to the school if they wish to contest that. If they do then wish to contest it, they, the principal sets a meeting with the parents. After the meeting with the parents, then the principal makes a final decision and it is clear within our, um, code of student conduct that if it is not an expulsion-related item, if it's simply a, you know, referral for, uh, any number of other items, it's, the principal's decision ultimately is final. It was, so it requires the principal to look at it, be the arbiter of it, determine whether or not, speak to the parties involved, but then essentially that principal now is the, that's where the buck stops. Now, in this case of an expulsion, then that's a larger sort of right, that's the entire right to, you know, education at your home school that's implicated. And therefore, it may be that, or it is, that under law, there's a lot broader series of steps that are required to ensure that people have notice, opportunity to be heard and right to challenge. So there's a difference between the two and one size doesn't fit all. So we can't just say, in every situation where anybody, parent, student, public member, anyone has a dispute with the school district, we're going to hand them a bunch of money and go tell them, hire an attorney and then come sit and talk to us about the situation. That's not the case. In fact, civil private representation generally is completely up to them as to whether somebody wants to do that. However, it can be just a matter of us dealing with them directly and going through a process. And if the process works out in such a way that achieves a resolution, that's the goal of all parties. So, um, it, the notice and due process provisions though depend on the right that's being affected. That's the short answer.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Anything else, Mr. Attorney Powers?
Uh, I believe that our next, up on our, uh, agenda to discuss today was regarding legislative updates. So, um, and I, so I think if Ms. Campbell has those items to discuss, I can turn it over to her and just check back with me in case there's anything else I need to submit.
Before we go there, do we need to, um, set the dates for this, for these, um, updates? These 172 policy updates?
Yes, please.
Um, I am gonna need to check with my office real quick, so hold on, why don't, why don't I have her get started on that? I'm gonna find out whether we have already reserved, but, um, or whether that's something that we are going to be reserving for the future. Because I was looking at the first two items. As to the 172, I'm not certain if we already have sort of reserved that. I'll check right now and find out status and get back with you.
We'll talk about it towards the end of-
Yes, sir.
... board comments, if that's concerned. All right, legislative priorities. Ms. Campbell?
Sure, so, uh, I'm-
I'm sorry, any, any public comment? Any public comment?
Anybody, anybody?
One, twice, gone.
Um, thank you, Chair. So, uh, the purpose of this conversation is really just for us to have some dialogue. I, I know that I wrote down a couple of ideas that I had put forth in my thoughts, um, more so than, than anything. Just kind of wanted to talk through them with you all. Uh, but also if you have recommendations, ideas, things that you've noticed, um, that you think would be helpful. I know we all received an email again just this morning from Dr. Danielle Thomas asking for us to submit individually, which we will be doing, uh, but thus the reason for us to have this dialogue potentially. If there is something that we all agree, or at least the majority of us, uh, have a relative idea on, then we can all put that forth and maybe it'll rise to the top, uh, for us. Um, the, and I guess I can just start with an idea and then we'll have conversations. So one of my first ones is, uh, requesting adjustments to the certification of teachers process, specifically for those who are changing careers. And, and the justification of that thought process for me, obviously we have some updates that have been happening uh, with veterans and all of those things that have come forth in recent legislation. However, what hasn't changed is the time requirements for those to receive certification or, you know, giving them the five years or whatever that length of time is. Even if they have a bachelor's degree, even if they potentially even have a master's degree, if it's not in a subject area that is transferable easily. And, and so I would like to see adjustments in how that certification of teachers process looks for those changing careers. Um, potentially they've had, I don't know, an accounting degree maybe, and even would be a CPA, but they want to come and teach something else. I, I, I'm, I'm using a generalization there. Uh, someone, I, I, uh, an actual real world example is someone with a pastoral degree, um, or something in theology or something like that, and they're changing careers to come into teaching. Whereas they may have been in children's ministry for all these years and, and actually teaching kids, but they have to come in as a substitute because they can't get certified. So I don't, that's, that's a real world example that we're dealing with right now. So I don't know what your thoughts are, especially those of you who have teaching certificates, um, but what that looks like, I, I would just like to see, and maybe we can word it better than what I was-
Actually, Vice Chair Campbell, that's the one for me. Um, I don't want to ever, um, minimize the work that our teachers have done and what they've done to become certified teachers, but I also understand that there's a shortage of qualified people being in front of our students and being in, out there in the classroom. And I don't want to suggest put folk out there, but I think the state has the ability to kind of open up some pathways to get people in the classroom that wanna be teachers. You brought up an interesting one, 'cause I talked to a lot of, um, law enforcement officers and people in criminal justice who have criminal justice degrees, but for them to come and teach, unless it's a criminal justice class-
Right.
-is difficult for them to get into the classroom without going through a different subject area or something of the, of the, of the matter. So, um, that's, that's the one for me, um, that I think we really need to push. Uh, I think that'll be a push actually statewide.
Right.
But I definitely think it needs to come from our board as well.
And if there's a way that we should word it differently, I mean, I just, requesting adjustments to the certification of teachers process for those changing careers is how I had it written, but there may be a better way to say that. Ladies with teaching certificates.
I wanna hear from, I wanna hear from the educators.
I know.
'Cause I don't wanna step, I don't want, I don't wanna step on anyone's toes-
Right.
-and be offensive with, with this conversation and how we approach it. Because we know, we, we've got some teachers that have gone to school for years and that's what they wanted to do, education. But you do have people that are changing careers, um, and we do have a shortage.
Yeah. Well, my thoughts are, we're here to do what's best for students. And qualified teachers in front of their students, it's what's best. And if that means being creative or altering something, because that's the way we've always done it in the past, it's no longer working anymore. Um, so I'm fine with that. I'm not sure about the wording. Um, you're way, you're always better at wordsmithing and stuff that, that than I would ever be. Um, I would like to see if, should that happen, like, you know, when new teachers come into a classroom or whatever, or in the past, you know, you, there were certain requirements, like during the school year, like I would be observed or I had to take some trainings and stuff like that. And, you know, if that could be incorporated with, you know, adults who already have the degree, but maybe when they're in there, just so they're not just thrown into a classroom. Because that's setting up for failure too, if they aren't learning the fundamental skills of actually teaching and pedagogy. You know, there's a lot involved. But, I mean, if they have a degree, they displayed they're intelligent, you know, they're gonna do, so I'm fine with that. Um, that, that's my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Ms. King. Ms. Thora?
Um, I'm thinking back to when I became certified to teach and it was, I had my degree, um, but I was hired out of field on a temporary certification and I had to pass the general knowledge reading and the general knowledge math. I had to take two additional, uh, col- college-level courses that were strictly education-related on the, the pedagogy side. And I think I had two years to complete that. So I'm wondering, you know, what has, has changed as far as that has concerned? Um, I agree that we need to be very careful about, just because someone has a degree doesn't mean that they can walk in and teach, you know? Um, there are people that don't have degrees that could probably come in and teach. Um, I'm also thinking about our paraprofessionals because they already have to pass a test to be paraprofessionals now, or have an associate's degree. And to me, that's one of the best pathways to the classroom in, in this shortage because our paraprofessionals already have classroom experience and they've been doing it. Uh, you know, I, I'm sure that's an open secret. Now with all of the absences that we had and illnesses the past couple of years, we had paraprofessionals that were-
Correct.
-literally teaching and, and doing all kinds of things. So I would love to see focus, if we're going to be opening and, and encouraging people from various careers and, and experiences in life to come and, and teach with us, it would seem like it would make a lot of sense to look within and look at the people that we already have, that have been doing the job and doing it well for a lot less money. Because that's what I'm hearing from, from veterans. It's like, okay, well, I, I made the suggestion, in order to truly be prepared to teach, wouldn't it be great to come in and work for a year or two as a, as a paraprofessional under an expert teacher? And immediately what I got back was, well, yeah, but look what paraprofessionals make. And I said, exactly. And, and I only mention veterans because that is the, the newest, um, career field that is, is being, um, promoted, you know?
Right.
And there's also difficult subjects, you know, like math and science.
And special needs.
And so, you know, someone who are special needs, there's just, I think it's hard to put everything in just one box and say, this is what we are. I think we just need to be very creative and again, do what's best for our students. And sometimes just because you're a good chemist doesn't always mean you will be a great teacher, you know? So I think we need to just be careful that-
I have this saying at the church where you have, um, a lot of folk that are in education that feel that they are great, they should, because they're educators, they should be teaching in the church. And I tell them all the time, just because you can teach math, don't mean you can teach Matthew. And, um, and, and it's, it's real, it's real. Because it doesn't just translate all the time over. So we need to make sure that we have, uh, people that are right for the classroom and that's gonna be best for students. Um, I did like, I do also, uh, Ms. Thora hit it on about the pairs that are teaching. And sometimes, I won't say sometimes, oftentimes they get overlooked. And we need to make sure that they have some clear pathways as well that are not as restrictive as they have been in the past, but that help them get to being that classroom teacher. I think that, that needs to be included in there as well.
I agree, because if you're a para, you're usually in there probably because it's your passion and your talent. And that's right there. So you're absolutely correct, Ms. Thora. And, um, I would love to see us do well with that too.
So that kind of ties into my second point, and, and so I don't, Mr. Browning, do you have anything on the first one?
Yeah, I do have, yeah, I haven't been recognized yet.
Go ahead.
All right, Ms. Mike.
Sorry.
Well, Chair, am I good? Thank you, sir. Uh, yeah, all right. I, this goes under a, a, a category, I really like what I'm hearing, uh, what Chairman had, uh, had indicated. Um, it's, there's, there's a tendency for a crisis, if a crisis develops, for a substitute, a dropping of standards. Uh, and that, that typically comes up, seems in modern society. And in education, that would be a disaster if we did not halt that. That would be what the grand jury's calling mismanagement. Because as you lower the standards, as you water down those standards, as you make all these different little adjustments, uh, uh, wow. Uh, there's a reason for a, for a, uh, an education certificate, for a degree in education, uh, educational psychology, for example. It's different than general psychology or psychology, uh, in, in a, in a criminal justice, that might fall into a criminal justice, uh, uh, venue. So the idea of moving down into substitutes because the institution has the problem. A lot of teachers are walking. It's not that we can't bring them in, they're walking out. And this is on a national basis and on a Florida basis and on this district basis. Teachers are walking. I've had some incredibly enlightening conversations, uh, uh, with teachers. Uh, we actually have a teacher that will be filling my seat. Uh, and if, if she was here, she has all sorts of great ideas on this. And upholding the standards is the key. Not watering down the standards or making exceptions. Uh, uh, just because Browning is a veteran and I do know firefighting, I do know this, I do know that. I've been trained in some of these things. I've been a police commissioner. But are you kidding me? I go in and begin, it would be like a, be like a giant study hall. If you're ever trying to think this thing through, use me as an example. Do we wanna put Don Browning in that position with his years of experience? Lord have mercy, I think we better maintain our standards. Uh, you know, he's gonna bring in auto racing or aerobatics or, or, or economics. So I'm saying, keep those standards up. Do not, and I, and I'm assuming you, you were referring to the, to the, uh, Florida Association recommendation? 'Cause we're, we're talking about the legislature.
Yes.
Right? That, that was, that was the reference-
Yes.
Uh, to that, to that doctor.
Yes.
Uh, I would say never go down that path and water things down. Never go down that path and water things down because our standards are so hard. It's like you can't establish, you, you can't go backwards. Once you water it down, maybe it'll come back someday, somehow, some. But, but we're in a, like a nosedive academically in the state of Florida. And this district's experienced it. So we have to turn it and go in the other direction so that you're actually educated when you come out. Uh, that you're actually educated and it doesn't become a giant study hall with some veteran sitting there or some, um, reverend sitting there talking about math. You know, I, I, wow. It just, it just blows my mind when I hear those, those, well, let's do it this way, they were successful in that field. Let's do it, let's, let's let them slide into this field. Wow, no. Get yourself a certificate. If you wanna be a teacher, go get trained, get a certificate, be a teacher. This is not a study hall, this is serious operation. This is a student's, an individual's life and we have a sacred honor, uh, duty to educate.
Ms. Campbell, then Ms. Thora?
So what I'm proposing is not watering it down. What I'm proposing, and perhaps if you had a challenge with, uh, Mr. Browning, if you specifically had a challenge with having veterans in classrooms, perhaps that's something you could have taken up with the previous legislature because that's what they've already approved and it's already in process.
And I don't mind it.
I'm, I'm not finished yet, sir.
I don't mind it.
So what I'm proposing is not watering it down. What I'm proposing is to make the pathway not quite so challenging to become certified as a teacher. Not saying that we don't want certified teachers in the classroom. I'm saying that if we have someone who is changing career fields, they have a bachelor's and potentially even master's degree in something that is not an educationally transferable degree. If it's not psychology or sociology or obviously science, math and all of those kinds of things. If it is a theology or biblical studies degree, that's the easiest one for me to use. Because that is not transferable to anything other than a history of religion class in high school. If they have that degree and potentially have even been working in children's ministry or something, working with kids for a number of years and potentially have that skill set to pedag- pedagogically teach. It's just a different degree field that they've, we currently do not have a pathway for that particular non-transferable bachelor's and/or master's degree to become a certified teacher in the same kind of timeframe that we have just allowed for our veterans and others to have. And so right now, we have people in that very same scenario that are substituting in our district as full-time substitutes because they're working on taking those tests in the timeframe that they, and it's not the five years that we're giving veterans. It's, you know, a shortened timeframe. Ms., Ms. Thora just explained what the timeframe is.
Two or three, that's a two or-
And I, and I think it's even shorter than that with, because they're not in a out-of-field certi- it's, it's not an out-of-field change. It's literally, they've never been certified before. They have to be temporarily certified, yes. But even getting that temporary certification, depending on the area that they're trying to become temporarily certified in, if it's that specific degree, it may not, I mean, I became temporarily certified in speech because I, communication was of something that I do and I teach speech and, but I became temporarily certified in speech at one time. That was an easily transferable, something that I was able to do. Um, nevertheless, I do think my next point will help pave this way a little bit better, but I know Ms. Thora and even Attorney Powers have more things to say about that one.
Sure.
Thank you, and, and, yes, um, great points being made. Um, Board Member Browning, I applaud you for wanting to uphold the honor of being a teacher. And there are, there are root causes here that, that we need to get to and that the legislature needs to know about why people aren't going into the field of teaching. Why aren't people going into the field of teaching? And our teachers that have been with us for 10, 15, 20 years, it's a major sticking point that their salaries sometimes are even less than people that are coming in for the first time, or not very much more. So to me, that's one glaringly obvious, um, area that would be very easy to rectify is recognizing and honoring our teachers that have proven themselves year after year in the classroom under every measurable and immeasurable test.
Yeah, actually, for one of my items was for the pay, for especially our veteran teachers. That was on my list. That, that is an easy fix. I mean, it's only a part of the problem. But that is something that we can actually lay our eyes on. It's glaring and stuff. So I actually had that as something I would like. And Allison, I also liked, um, when you were talking about how to word the first thing, the first item you brought. Um, you said adjust, but I also like the word you used with pathway too. Because I think what you mean is not just throw them in a classroom and here you go. Creating a pathway and having a way so that they succeed somehow, if you could-
Successful pathway.
Successful path, yeah. I just, when you said that, it kind of stuck with me a little bit more than adjust. Because we're not wanting to adjust any, I mean, we want to adjust that, but we also want to create a route for them to go and be successful.
Right.
Right, and I think we're not trying to, by asking this, we're not trying to dumb down the standards.
Right, not at all.
We still want them to have the same standards of being educated. We're just saying, let's open up more pathways, more routes to get to the same destination of having more qualified teachers in front of our kids. And oftentimes, it's, sometimes people go different ways to get their degrees. Some go straight to college, some do it, take 10 years, they get a degree. We don't want to penalize people or create unnecessary obstacles if they're trying to come into education when we need, when there is a need right now. But then also, in this, and Superintendent, I'm going to begin with you on this as well. We've got so many burdens for, or hindrances, obstacles that prevent teachers who have retired.
It's on my list, too.
From coming back into the system. And right now, I've been talking to some that would love to come back into the system, they just may not want to work five days a week. They may want to do something different. And we have to be able to have some flexibility as a district, as districts.
I was going to say, is that state or would that be district?
I'm not sure. I think it's state.
Especially if they were in drop.
Yeah.
That you have to stay out of each.
Chair, we, does it open to sky, I wanted to get recognized, but I didn't.
I'm coming to you, Mr. Browning, I promise.
But I mean, we're passing back and forth.
They were asking questions. I'll get to you, Mr. Browning, I promise. So we have to figure out how to bring that pool of people because now some of them have reached that age where they can work as much as they want to work now, and they're not going to be bound by any penalties from the government. And they want to come back, and they want, and they may not want, again, they may not want to come back for five or six years. But there are some that would love to give a two-year commitment and work three days a week or half a day.
Job share.
Yeah, job share, be in the classroom, and mentor, and in fact, in part of this, mentor some of these younger teachers and help them to become great teachers. So, Mr. Browning.
Yes, yes. Boy, this is so super. But we, when we're talking about standards, this is incredible. We do, if, we're not talking about raising the standards, we're talking about lowering standards.
No.
Not at all.
No, we're not.
Well, well, I'm saying that if we have a standard that requires a teaching certificate.
We're still sending these teachers to take.
Well.
We're just saying a different pathway to get it.
Let me make my point, if I can, that's a mid-sentence. We have a standard, and I wholeheartedly believe in maintaining the standard. If you want to accelerate and open additional paths to achieve that standard, okay, great, that's great. Facilitate it, and I'm a wholeheartedly agree with pay. There's a reason teachers are walking, they're leaving. We often dwell on the idea of we have trouble attracting, but there's a lot of teachers that are walking.
It's retention.
Pardon me?
Retention.
That's exactly right, a great word for it. They're leaving, they're walking, they're voting with their feet, they're leaving, and that is a mismanagement issue. It's a problem, and we have to address that, not lower the standards. And I'm using lower the standards, that's just my term. But if we have a standard, and we say we aren't going to have to meet that standard, that's lowering the standard for me. I make it analogous to being a race car driver at Daytona. You've got certain qualifications you have to meet. And, yeah, maybe we're short on drivers, so we don't just put Reverend Cummings in as a race car driver if, in fact, he's kind of questioning that particular occupation. So, or Don Browning as a physicist in a Manhattan project. I don't think we want to do that and lower the standards, I just don't think we want to do that. Maybe there's a way to send him off to school and get him up to speed. But a teacher, to me, is as important as any occupation that operates and there is a standard for it, and we are failing. We've got kids that don't even know how to write cursive, we've got kids that have trouble printing, we have kids that have trouble writing. And I remember the introduction of a thing called study hall. And that was a waste of time, that was just a no-education moment in the classroom. And it, I just don't think they had a teacher at the time. And they introduced that, and it gave everybody a free moment. But the idea of a certified teacher, if we miss that, we're going to be missing everything. Because you've got to have that standard, and it's got to be up there. And sure, I'll drive them off to school if some veteran wants to learn. And I wholeheartedly believe in qualified people. Those people are qualified, but if they're not qualified as a teacher, then go get qualified and come on back, or maybe we'll give you, you know, the substitute thing is, appears to be expanding. And that, I despise the idea of expanding substitutes because we don't have teachers because it's a circular deficiency, and then we lose out on education. And we've got, we're losing the teachers, and we're not able to get teachers. And now we're talking about getting in less qualified teachers, that's a mistake from this board member. Thank you.
So the way I have it worded, I've added and subtracted, and you can word it however you want. But the way I have it worded and will be putting in mine is to request successful pathways to teacher certification process for those changing careers with non-transferable bachelor's degrees similar to the new veteran process, including pedagogical support processes. And I said, for example, theology and biblical studies degrees or communication studies degrees. Because that's also a degree path that perhaps you would be a great teacher in some field, but you don't necessarily have it. Regardless, that's the way I'm writing that at this juncture. What I want to stress next, I think will clear up what Mr. Browning's thoughts have been. I would also like to request in this, you know, and for us to discuss, adjustments to the Florida College System four-year degrees, degree offerings in K-12 education. And here's where I'm getting that. The legislature was willing to invest in programs to recruit nursing students to begin filling medical professional shortages through a variety of workforce initiatives, including residencies, internships, scholarships, loan forgiveness, et cetera. Perhaps that's a strategy for teacher preparation candidates as well. And I know Dr. Gullen and I have briefly spoken that the College of Central Florida would be a wonderful place to have a four-year bachelor's degree within the Florida College System. I know that Seminole State College got approved this year, as did, I believe, the State College of Florida Manatee in Sarasota. So if the College of Central Florida had one, that would really, really help us a lot. But I think if we request that the legislature make some significant investments to recruiting students specifically into the field of education similar to what they have with medical professional shortages, I think that would be something that we could request as well. So I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I like that. I think that's the right wording.
I mean, I think that additionally, it offers the opportunity for us to then also subset, request pathways for the paraprofessional to certified teacher as well. Because with a paraprofessional having an associate's degree, they do need to have a bachelor's degree to get to that certified teaching level. And so perhaps the four-year degree within the Florida College System could also help on that pathway. Maybe there's financial support for that, maybe there's, I think that's kind of a subset of the same thought process.
Next question, are all paras, all paras have a 60-hours associate's, I didn't think.
I don't know.
Or they have to pass the paratest?
Have to pass the paratest.
One or the other.
So we just need, I think there has to be some additional ways that those paras are able to get what they need to get. There's maybe some credit for the time that they are serving in certain positions, types of classrooms that they're teaching in. Length of, there has to be something there. I'm just trying to think outside the box on that. Because we have some, we have some great paraprofessionals who are, they are teachers, they're just not in the teacher classification. Because they're teaching, they're actually teaching the classes. And so we have to figure out how to work that in there. And encourage, and encourage their academic continuation of their academic endeavors as well.
Well, and that is the, that is the on-the-job experience that could translate to credit. Because, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but when I'm interested in doing something, I immerse myself in it. And that's how you really find out whether or not it's for you, you know? Go clean a stall, you'll figure out if you like horses.
That's the word that I was looking for, on-the-job training.
On-the-job training.
Get some, I'm not saying you can get all your credits with on-the-job training, but you should be able to get some credit for being in that field and working, having that on-the-job training.
An apprenticeship?
Something, yeah, something like that.
And there are professional development opportunities for our paraprofessionals now, thank goodness, there used to be so few. And it is an example, as you were speaking to Board Member Browning, that I agree with so much, that our paraprofessionals, the standards have been elevated for them. You know, it used to be that, I'm not even sure you had to have a high school diploma, maybe you had to have a high school diploma. I know you did it. But it's been in recent years where the paraprofessional test or the 60-hours came into play. So their standards have been elevated. And so to go backwards with the field of teaching and accepting that because there's a crisis, there's ways, I think, to be smarter in addressing the crisis, and that's through addressing the root causes. The pay is one of them. All of the pressure I don't, that teachers are under these days, the intensity of the daily schedule, it's relentless. And, you know, there's still this idea that teachers, you know, have summers off. They did it because of mother's hours, and while that may have been true, you know, back in the day largely, it's definitely so different now. And that gets me thinking about incredibly interesting people that have done very well in their professions. Those are folks that we certainly want to invite and encourage to come into our classrooms as guest teacher for the day, or those types of things, because kids love those real-world examples. Our CPA comes and does that. Once a year to help the graduating seniors understand, hey, it's about to get real, you know? These are taxes, and you're going to have to pay them, you know? We have such a wealth of knowledge in our community, and so many interesting citizens and people. And making sure that the door is open to them to be able to come in. That's different than asking them to come in and become teachers.
Right, right. And you said something, Board Member Thrower, and also I heard it in this conversation, I'm not sure who said it, about, I heard, the reason why teachers are leaving. Well, it's not a reason, it's reasons, it's more than just pay. There's a bunch of reasons that they're leaving, and I think we have to, we're going to eventually have to get to those root causes sooner than later. Because when we start addressing those, then we'll be able to retain qualified folk. Because when folk are, listen, when private companies and charter schools and all those folk, all those people who are out there in the education business for profit are making it lucrative for people to leave the public school system. They'll come in and get their resume straight, and then they're going to leave us. We're seeing that happen nationwide. And so we have to be a viable organization where we can retain those qualified people and make sure we treat them right while we have them here. And again, I want to keep harping that we got to figure out a way, pathways for, Ms. Campbell, for us to be able to get those retired folk back into the system. And I'm not sure if, and I know part of the drop thing is with, you know, there's a timeframe of drop. It's a year, they have to sit out a year, is it a year? And I know they changed it, I remember when they changed it, because folk were double-dipping, they would go out 30 days and come right back at the same pay. So I remember that, I remember all that happening. But we're, in the education field, we're in a crisis. And if we have folk that are willing to come back, we need to have a, I think the legislators have to look at a way to get them back in there.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Boy, I, root cause. Board Member Thrower just nailed it, root cause is the key, fundamental. That is the answer. Everybody here, probably, I can think of three instances where I can immediately get masters and, for the most part, PhD-type. Now, it's not PhD, we had a, I was having a conversation before this, a doctor's level for my background in like three subjects. And what a joke, what a joke. I mean, really, think about it, it's a watering down. Back in the day, I'm sorry, that wasn't happening. I've seen it, I've seen it in industry, I've seen a drop. If you go in and see a doctor now, you may or may not see a doctor because there's another level that's come in, and it's kind of a helper doctor.
Physician's assistant.
Yeah, physician's assistant. So now we're into, and that's like a substitute teacher. And that's what I'm talking about. Maybe I'm not using the right words here in the terms of a lowering of standards. But I just say, look, you may assist like a resident residency. You might come in, my doctor might come in with five or 14 residents, students, resident doctors. They're all doctors, MDs at that point. However, I want to see my doctor, and I do not, maybe just on a temporary one-time basis or something, but I do not slide down to that lower standard. I say, go, that assistant doctor can go get a doctor's degree and then come on back. That'd be okay. But I'm not lowering my standards. They may be lowering theirs, but I'll go elsewhere, I'll move with my feet. And there's a thing about that Board Member Thrower brought up with this root cause of why, I've had a teacher, just in the last 10 days, really elaborate on the idea that they have to rush through, like, I think algebra was brought up, but like rush through it in a three-day session, or rush through it in a 10-minute session, or rush through it in some kind of a standard that is truly a lowering of standards in terms of learning and education. So that's the kind of thing, they get so frustrated, they leave. They just go. They're not, it's below their ethical standards to say that they're the teacher and they're getting the job done. So I don't know if I'm getting across, or I'm jumping on in a supportive nature of this root cause idea. But that's the word that I'll get up, this board member will get up to our legislators, and I will hit that heavy. I plan, I plan a departure from this board in a very short amount of time, maybe 90 days or whatever, whatever that amounts to. But I really am going to bear down for about the next five years on this very subject at the Tallahassee level. And it's critically important, I think, for my stage in history to be able to go from the 50s now up to this point. And I span it, and I just want to bring up, talking about the old days, just a little reflection for everybody. Today, we started World War II. And most of my youth was involved in World War II. Hitler marched into Poland today about 78 years ago, in 1938, September 1st, marched in. And so it's something kind of to reflect on. It completely changed the world for generations. And it's a little bit off the subject, but those standards that were set in the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, 2000, like that, we got to hold them. We got to hold them, and if we do water them down, we got to water them down in the most discreet, careful way. Because these children coming up, got to know how to read, write, do arithmetic, think, and be educated, like we're educated. This is an educated group, and we got to, everybody's got to be at that level. Thank you. Thank you.
Board members, we have to be at an attorney-client session that is scheduled. We have a court reporter who's been retained within about 10 minutes. I do have dates for our potential, well, I have, we can set dates for our proposed work sessions that we discussed. I will tell you that I was correct that for 9/27, we're gonna take care of those ones that are clerical errors and that we will take care of the school safety and security policy. Those are the immediate needs. As far as the 172 updates, I will prepare briefing, but we can simply, we can set that for whatever work session day works and is available. We can do that now or we can do that when we come back after we're going to, we're gonna adjourn and come back and go back on the record to conclude.
Let's go ahead and adjourn now, not adjourn.
Recede.
Right now for that meeting. And when we come back, we'll come back, finish this up and give those dates to, and by that time, Martinez Lopez can kinda tell us where we have some openings on our work sessions. Is that good with everybody?
Where will we retire to? Where's this gonna be?
The conference room.
Okay, thank you.
Are we all good?
Sorry.
May I, Chair? Just clarification. Existing work sessions or special work sessions on a separate day?
It can be either.
Either or.
Okay, thank you.
It can be either.
We just wanna get it done.
I do have a week in October that I'm prepared not to be terribly available. So other than that, it's wide open.
Sooner rather than later. Like I said, because some of these school districts have already gotten some of this taken care of. We're a little bit behind on it.
All right. So, meeting is going to be recessed at 10:52 until we come back from these other meetings.
Meeting is returned back into session at eleven eighteen. We're going to continue our conversation. We were talking about legislative priorities and coming up with some dates. I'm sorry, the dates was for the other thing. Legislative priorities. Do we have any additional legislative priorities? Ms. Campbell?
Sure. So just to recap where we were. So discussing creating successful pathways to teacher certification process for those changing careers with non-transferable bachelor's degrees. Then I also have here add more four-year degrees in K-12 education within the Florida college system, i.e. the College of Central Florida. I have add incentives to those pursuing education and teaching degrees where the subset says the legislature is willing to invest in programs to recruit nursing students to be in feeling medical professional shortages through a variety of workforce initiatives, including residencies, internships, scholarships, and loan forgiveness. Incorporate this strategy to increase teacher preparation candidates as well. I also have as a subset to request pathway updates for the paraprofessional certificate to certified teacher. Then I have added for what you all have said to address teacher pay increases specifically for veteran teachers. And I also have incorporated create pathways for retired teachers to come back into the classroom faster with adjustments to drop, potentially job share, mentoring, part-time, et cetera. Are there other teaching-specific things or specifically in classroom that you want? Because then I have a couple of others that are capital-related.
I would like, Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to include, because we spent a lot of time on it, maintaining standards, teaching standards. I think it's critical that they know that we hold the standards as it can't be violated, invalid. So if we can do that.
Maybe what Allison can put on the part about us adjusting or that pathway is making sure we're keeping practice with keeping high standards or maybe add that in there.
Maintaining the sanctity of the teaching certificate.
Teaching certificate standard.
Maintaining the sanctity of the teaching certificate. Does that sound okay with you guys?
And I like this, I like the term standards because there's an erosion of general terms.
While maintaining the standards.
And educational standards.
For obtaining the teacher certificate. Because I don't think anywhere in here we're asking for the standards to be dropped. But you can add that sentence about while maintaining, doing all these things while maintaining.
High standards of a teaching certificate, perhaps?
Yes.
I'll just, I'm saying while maintaining the sanctity of the teaching certificate standards.
Oh, I like, okay. That works.
Thank you.
Standards are so critical.
That's fine. I will remove, I will remove.
Or can you think of anything?
If I may, Chair members of the board, I have a couple of clarifying questions just for two, because I've been making some notes and this is a fantastic discussion, by the way. Wholeheartedly agree with what's been shared today. To the point of the pathways for our paraprofessionals, which I completely agree, they are committed to the work, they're doing the work. So is that potentially then, to not oversimplify this, but to mirror what's been afforded to our veterans coming into the classrooms essentially? So as such, they can have sixty hours and not have the full degree, the bachelor's degree level, which would have been equivalent to one hundred and twenty hours, right? And would offer a five-year certificate because alternatively what we have right now are our temporary teachers with bachelor's degree can be in the classroom with a three-year temporary certificate as long as they take those certification exams and take and participate in our professional development certification program. So we essentially saying that our paraprofessionals would mirror what's been afforded to our veterans.
I would like to see that.
I'll add that.
I like them. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Thor.
I would say yes, since it's already a law for our veterans. And paras are infinitely more qualified in general. So to me, it's a no-brainer that this law should include them. I still feel like the honoring of the noble field of education isn't being addressed through that law, but we're talking about getting to that through a different.
So could honoring that, so currently it's three years, correct? But this law gives them five years.
Right.
For the veterans.
For veterans.
Five-year temporary teaching.
Five-year temporary. So why not ask in all this for everybody to have five years?
Level the playing field.
Yeah, let's keep it equal. You're not dropping any standards. You're giving everybody the same opportunity to get it done within that five-year timeframe.
That's equity.
Yes, sir.
Yes, the word veterans, we've talked about veterans of military and veterans of teaching, and that is very confusing.
Right.
And you can slip in to the theater without a ticket, if you will.
I think, did you say, I'm sorry, did you say teaching veteran, veteran teachers?
So I've now, yeah, I keep adjusting along the way. So now what I have in the requesting pathway updates for the paraprofessional certificate to certified teacher, I've added in parentheses, similar to the new military veteran requirements of sixty hours with five years to obtain permanent certification.
I wouldn't say similar, I would put mirroring.
Mirroring, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it needs to be the exact same.
Okay.
And we're kind of slicing and dancing around words, but I like new laws to be tweaked in the following session. I mean, that's just kind of a standard in the legislature. And when you say mirroring, it's kind of an endorsement. If you say, if it's matching, I think what you're trying to get at is that it be equal across the board, not mirroring and setting in stone that earlier legislation, because that'll likely be, what I've heard is it'll likely be changed and updated.
And if it is, then the new legislation would mirror.
It should be mirrored a new one.
It needs to be, it needs to be the same or better for people that are already infinitely more qualified.
Right, right. And so mirroring, what was the term you had before, before the word mirroring? What is it?
Similar.
Similar?
Similar to the new.
It has to be stronger than similar to get to, or remember Thor's thought.
And she said mirroring.
And she said mirroring. Do you have another word that is less at the mirroring the legislation, but the standard?
Current legislation, we could say.
What, did you say something?
Equivalent.
Equivalent.
It's more the benefit.
Equivalent, I like equivalent.
Equivalent to.
Equivalent, equivalent. That way you're not endorsing the earlier legislation, because that's going to change. I would just guess. And so now what you're asking for, I think, and help me with this if I'm wrong, is equality.
Equity.
In application of whatever the law is. Is that not the, what we're talking about?
We're saying even, yes, equity.
Yeah, equity.
Even in the playing field.
Excellent, excellent. And I'm with that. But not the legislation. The legislation's going to change. Let's just, you know, everything does. But equity will not change, because it shouldn't change, because if you're in and you got it and it's solid, it ought to be. That's the way it ought to be. And you don't lose it.
Do you have additional questions on?
Just one other, because a distinct difference between the three-year temporary certificate that exists has been existing for some years now requires the bachelor's degree. And with the new provision for the five-year for the veterans, our veterans, military veterans, they have the ability to earn the bachelor's degree during that time. So it's a significant difference and to the point that the board has made about the paraprofessionals that would allow them the opportunity to be recognized as a teacher while earning their bachelor's degree. And I think that's a significant.
That is.
Move forward.
I would think we would need to specify.
Well, and.
Paraprofessionals who have sixty credit hours or associate's degree to be given that opportunity, because then you're making it equitable to the military. You're not, you're not really asking anything outside of.
Correct.
You're asking what's already within that law.
We don't jump ahead. Nobody jumps ahead of another category because they're in line and they're bettering themselves and working toward something that's already been achieved. So we maintain that.
And they both, they both require the subject area exams. So to your point, Mr. Browning, about not lowering the bar, there's still an expectation that they demonstrate knowledge and the ability to be experts in the field for which they're going to teach. So.
This has already happened.
That's already in place.
With the other category. So category A, category B are equal. And we're enhancing the opportunity and perhaps creating a pathway that might facilitate the need.
And what that does, what I see that doing is it encourages those paraprofessionals who are already in the field that may have been going to school. It encourages them to press a little bit harder, a little bit farther, to know that, hey, if I, if I at least get my sixty, I can qualify.
Correct.
To be a teacher and still be working on my degree. That's more of an incentive to them to want to do it. And so that means you put people in the field that really want, that are investing themselves in the system. That's what I see happening with this.
And if that changes legislatively, then the whole thing changes. The legislature has the control over it and it changes. And that's sort of what we're asking. We're not saying set that in previous or that concept in concrete.
As to the teacher pathways that, that were pointed out earlier, that's important. And I would, I would submit for the board that when they're talking about the multiple pathways to get there, there are, with teacher certification at least, we're talking here about not just apples and oranges with the military versus education degree candidates, but with a number of paths, we're talking about, you know, apples, oranges, tomatoes, and plums. I mean, they're completely different animals. For one, the military temporary teaching certificate, as I think that the superintendent pointed out, doesn't require a bachelor's degree. It requires 48 months of military service with an honorable discharge, 60 college credits with a 2.5 GPA, passing score on a Florida subject area examination, employment in the Florida school district, including in charter school, and cleared for background screening. So those are all requirements there. For another path, the requirements may be different, but, you know, they, they, just because they're different doesn't mean that one is substandard and the other is greater. It's, it weighs and measures different things. And since the legislature's decided to make some of these changes, for you and the board's consideration, it's, it's, where there are multiple pathways, those pathways are going to have to be looked at closely to ensure that we not, you know, that, that the standards are kept, as you indicate, but also that each of these items aren't taken just as, we're not necessarily going to require 48 months of military service for someone who has a, you know, another path to get there.
Right.
We're not going to necessarily require certain things that are required of military veterans if someone who has another path is taking that path to get there. So these are necessarily going to be things that you have to, that you have to weigh when considering, and so the legislator, legislature is the ones that get to do that. And focusing on those pathways, as you've talked about, is a.
So the verb is, is helpful in, if mirroring might be what you're saying, it may be you gotta, you gotta go down this path.
If we want to hear what I've completely rewritten, but now.
No, 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 but I, I know, I think we're on a good path here. I think we're on a good path.
Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair. Attorney Powers, hence the word equivalent, right? So when I hear the board discussing the paraprofessionals, for example, that have been serving in that role, if there's an equivalent number of years perhaps or service, that would be recognized as perhaps equivalent service, if, if that, if that's where the board chooses to go.
That goes back to the conversation of giving those people who've been in that, in that field, some credit for the time that they've already served in the classroom. Because I, I could tell you just talking, some of them consider a classroom almost like a war zone in some, just some instances with some of the things they're dealing with. So we have to make sure that we're giving them equitable, equivalent, I guess the word.
Equivalent is, I concur, equivalent is the better term for this discussion, in my opinion.
So I've completely rewritten it. Where I was saying create successful pathways now just says, equitably offer five years to receive a temporary teaching certificate, equivalent to the new military veteran requirements of 60 hours coursework with five years to obtain permanent certification for those changing, that's like lines, for those changing careers with non-transferable degrees and/or 60 hours plus work experience while maintaining the sanctity of the teaching certificate standards, including pedagogical support. Then I also subset is where I've added request pathway updates for paraprofessional certificate to certified teacher, equivalent to the new military veteran, 60 hours with five years to obtain permanent certification. Does that sound like that fits there or does that need to go?
Back to the part where you said the 60 hours, I didn't hear something.
Um, 60, it's going to be 60 hours coursework plus work experience.
Plus work experience.
Yes.
Are we putting a number on that?
That's on the job work experience, is that what we're saying?
I mean, I'm just thinking.
That's for them to.
Yeah, because they're going to mull that out.
Right.
And debate.
Right. I mean, we're not creating the law, we're just making the recommendation, but.
Is this a suggestion to, to the, to the association?
This is to the, no, no, no.
To the legislature.
This is the recommendation to the advocacy and legislative committee for the, of the Florida School Board Association.
For the association.
Yes, for us to discuss. However, we're having the extensive conversation now that may additionally lead into what we want to approve as a board, but we do that at a board meeting once FSBA priorities are set. But this is just recommendation to FSBA, of which I am your advocacy representative, so that potentially these ideas will rise to the top and can be statewide priorities in addition to Marion County priorities.
In terms of a, or I'm sorry, Chair, in terms of a suggestion, I, I, this, this goes into a political realm, but I believe statewide that advocacy by a heavy political group is, is, is like a, a non-starter. I remember being at a meeting where I was the only person who, who objected to the nonpartis- they were going to lobby a nonpartisan, and did, nonpartisan election process. I said, no, it ought to be partisan. And I mean, it was the entire, a couple hundred people. And, and I was the only one, and then another one across the room jumped up, so it was not, it was not unanimous. But wow, I mean, that was so, that was so, what I would just characterize as liberal. So we've got to be careful, I think, in terms of, I think we should go to the legislature rather than to any association we belong to.
We'll do both.
Oh, yeah, that's true. That's true. We can do both.
Yeah, so we'll submit that, but also, you know, this will, what we're requesting for Marion County too. And so when we visit our legislators, we'll explain to them and share with them what our personal needs are. Now whether the state, you know, everyone else wants to use it or not, that's up to them. But right now, this is what we're asking for, you know.
Of our association.
Of our, no, no, no.
An association we belong to.
No, no, yeah.
Of our legislators. These are our needs that we're asking our legislators to do something about.
I thought it was the association.
No, no, no. These are our legislative needs, priorities. We're going to submit them to FSBA to be included on the statewide legislative priorities, but these are our needs that we will, you know, remember when in South of Manhattan we, we went around, we talked to each of our legislators? These are the things that we're going to present to them as a board individually, but we're also submitting them to FSBA to submit statewide.
We let them in on our, on our question.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm paraphrasing.
And honestly, the more, the more boards around the state that suggest the same thing, so while I understand your argument of it being a political organization or it having partisan one way or the other, whatever that might look like, for your information, and you may be very well aware, this past year's advocacy committee to our legislature was incredibly successful on all the priorities that they submitted, of which I was a representative of the advocacy committee. That's why I'm asking our board to have this conversation now rather than after FSBA has already created the priorities, because we were able to hash it out. The room is full of all kinds of people and we hash out, this would, can we massage this this way? Can we do, and we're in there with lobbyists, we're in there with everyone discussing what FSBA's priorities can be from the state side. Essentially, this is what the entire state school board association say, and they were incredibly successful. The wins that we had this year that we're so happy about were in part because FSBA lobbyists were advocating for them because of the work that we're doing right now to submit to FSBA. So I understand that you have problems with FSBA. I get that.
No, 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 no.
But, well, I mean.
That can't be characterized, no.
Okay.
It, it needs to be characterized.
You had a problem with a particular meeting that you attended with FSBA members?
It needs to be characterized as a, as an association that's outside of this board and.
Of which all five board members belong.
No, I belong to, right, I belong to other organizations. And the other organizations, perhaps we bring that in and we, we get or make, make them, you know, privy to this. In other words, this is a public meeting, and so we're bringing things out in an open, public way, and it doesn't, it isn't germane. It's, it really is heading, as the chair said, to the legislature, not to a specific association. I mean, we could have multiple associations, and I do belong to some other associations. So with that said, boom, we all use this because it's going to the legislature.
Right. But like what we're talking about right now, lots of times when like Allison goes to her meeting, usually, not always, because every county has their own needs and every district, but lots of times there's commonalities. So for example, we know nationwide, statewide, our district, there's a shortage in teachers. So we're trying to figure out, hey, how can we solve that? And that's exactly what we're trying to develop, you know, a request from our legislators. But when they, when Allison takes that to them, they're, every other district may be like, hey, we had the same problems, we agree. Or they may not, and it may not be used. But what Allison's doing today, that will represent for Marion County School Board, regardless if it's used up there or not. Does that make sense?
A little bit, little bit. Now, all right, I'm meeting with, I'm meeting with Pasadena, President of the Senate. So, Baxley, Perry, boom, 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 boom. And I'll take this, this kind of thought process to them as compared to the, to a, an association. Now, we have multiple associations. Another one's coming up with a two-day thing or whatever. You know, we got different associations we belong to. So I'm pushing toward not a, 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 a line of thought that is from this board to the legislature. And it can go to some others.
Of course.
Okay. If that works.
May I briefly interject?
Yeah.
Anytime any board member speaks to the public or to a representative in general, they need to do so indicating that they're speaking as an individual and not as a representative of the board unless they've been given that representative authority that the board says, here's what we want to go forward with and here's going forward to discuss it as a sort of committee head or as a representative of the board. So it would not be proper for any one board member to address, this is the opinion of the board, or this is the direction the board wants to have. Just make sure that it's kept clear that it's, it's coming from, you know, a particular board member. This board member believes this as opposed to.
And frankly, thank you, Attorney Powers, because I was just going to correct us on that pathway as well. Frankly, on a time-sensitive issue, the reason we're doing this now is because of FSBA's request by September 15th that we submit ideas. However, this year's legislative cycle does not begin until March. This board will not have legislative delegation meeting where we present our little handout until probably January, December, January. So we actually won't vote on what our board legislative priorities are until, unfortunately, after you and Ms. King have already left the board. So certainly you can go and speak with individuals as you want, but to be saying that you're representing Marion County School Board priorities will not be accurate until the board has actually voted on them, which most likely will be in December or January.
Well, I have this, would have this, that's, that's the value of this.
Sure.
Because it's to, it's from the board and it's to the legislature, and it can be used.
Sure.
By an association, let's say. That would be, that would, is that what you're addressing? Like, like, so, so we have this document and I'm up with Baxley. And I say, hey, here's what we're, here's what we're talking about. This is, this is where we are. This is what they have, this is what our, our board has, has decided are our priorities this year.
Has discussed. This is what we have discussed because this board is going to be different when we actually vote on what the priorities are.
But as of right now, as of right now, I'll probably next week.
What this board has discussed.
So I'll be having that discussion. This, this is public record and this is what the board is saying, right? Is, is that not who we're going to? I mean, I, that's what I'm saying. I, no, I, I agree.
The best advice I can give you in order to maintain safety in this discussion here is you can point them to our YouTube conversation, you can say, this board, you, you, the board has been discussing, I don't think any board member, and it's clear from within our own policy as well as standing rules on boards in general, no one member can say, I'm here as sort of the board's representative or intermediary and therefore even if I don't say that, here's what we want you to do. That's not, that's not appropriate unless you are the person who has been put into that position to do that.
And that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
I, I'm saying that I'm speaking for my district and me as a board member, if it's, say it's next week. I'm speaking for myself.
Yeah.
And I do not, I, I'll, anytime I give a, give a talk and, and I'm at a meeting, I will always say, I'm speaking for myself and for my district, for, for my position, not for the board. That's a, that's a given.
Yes.
Now, if the board does produce a document, then that document is germane to any conversation that I have with the legislator. There is nothing that would stop that, at least for me. Sue me if there is. But that, if it comes off this board, it, and it's going to the legislature, then it's going to the legislature. Sorry, that's just the way it's going to have to be.
Anything else on education? Dr. Gullett, do you have additional questions?
I did want to move on to you already. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. So a note on FRS. We've had, the board had a discussion earlier about return, and I, I mean, no me, I'm not, I'm not an expert in, in FRS, but I do know that Florida retirement system does not allow for a teacher, you were talking about a teacher, to come back until after a year with the benefits. There is a provision that provides the seven to 12 months, but it's with, you can't receive the salary and the retirement benefits. So there is, I just want to provide clarity, there is an option under FRS that allows them to return sooner, but they are not afforded the opportunity to get the retirement and the salary. So they're.
They come back early.
Correct. In, in that second half of the year.
They wait the year, they're able to get both.
That is correct. So it's just something to consider as you're looking at options to present with getting, and I couldn't agree more, getting them back sooner.
So if they came back sooner, they would have to decide whether they want to continue to get their retirement or get paid.
That's correct. So as you're discussing proposal for consideration to get our veteran teachers, not military veterans, experienced, tenured folks that have been, that have had the experience and have retired with Florida retirement system sooner, the recommendation might be to change that.
That.
Thank you.
That looks like where it needs to change, needs to happen.
Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Thor.
And I'm not sure, in fact, I'm pretty convinced that what you just said is not widely known. And if it were, then it may change someone's mind about when they would choose to return. It may not. But that's news to me. I think maybe I remember hearing it at some point, but it seems to be much more commonly known that when you retire, that you're just out for a year before you can come back. That's it. There's no other pathway.
To get their benefits, that is correct.
Yeah.
So they're giving something up if they come back early.
Well, and that's in part because the other pathways do create potential for confusion and risk. In fact, I've even heard that some people have advised that, that you don't even volunteer at a school during that year period because of the fact that.
That is correct.
It could be seen to be violative. Now that, there is a report released in 1994, or sorry, 2004, I believe, by FRS that specifically addresses that and says, no, that's okay. However, be careful about stepping into gray zones. For example, someone steps into a position that isn't funded this year as a volunteer because if they have that then experience in that position and it's funded next year as a grant-level position or something like that, they wish to be able to step into it, that can then have some pretty drastic consequences. And so in general, they're told, don't, don't do anything for that year. So that's the safe advice, but it may not necessarily be accurate for someone's individual case. So because people talk about these things via word of mouth, it's a good idea for them to go directly to the source and call FRS and talk to FRS. What can I do? What am I allowed to do? Don't take it from your friend and don't take it from someone else, but you know, there, there are some specific rules that may govern your case that I can't, no one can anticipate until they know the specifics of your situation.
That's, if I may, that is really important information because what I'm hearing is a lot of teachers are lamenting that they're retiring and then it's just the court is cut. cut. They would appreciate having the opportunity to still be involved without being full-time and, and to get it conveyed out there somehow of who they should call to find out as an individual what opportunities may be available could help us and also help them.
Absolutely.
And if I may, Chair, to your, to your point, board member thrower, absolutely. That's why we always refer them to the Florida retirement system. There's a lot of complexity in, in the benefits package under FRS, and so we always refer them back there. Because some, some, for example, employees have had, um, a break in service, or they've had service elsewhere, and certain portions have been included in FRS and others not, and there's a lot of different scenarios. We always refer to them to FRS.
That doesn't seem to cover the public perception piece. I don't know how.
No, and, and unfortunately, it's one of those things, I've thought about this exact issue myself, and it, to what, to the degree that I might even try to communicate with FRS and staff to create something that is a sort of FAQ sheet or something, here's the common answers. It, it, it largely is, it, I hate giving people the answer that is, it depends, and it depends on your facts, or always double-check everything that you're hearing right now because it may not be accurate depending on your particular situation. That, that, you know, at some point, the advice gets swallowed up in the disclaimer. So-
And it makes people then just want to step back.
Right.
Say, forget it, I'm gonna sit out for a year, I'll go teach at a private school, you know, and, and make money, and then come back in a year, which then we could maybe say, oh, well, we're only losing them for a year. Well, sometimes you lose somebody for a year, you lose them for a lifetime.
Sure.
So, I, I would just love, and this is not the day, I'm sure, but now that it's out there, to try to come up with some type of direction or input so that it becomes more publicly widely known that it is not, it is not this or, it is this or, or nothing. There are opportunities. It, it may take a little, you know, investigating and so on, but, but there's more there than, than what appears to be publicly known. There's more opportunity than what appears to be publicly known.
What I may suggest is that I might check the recent guidance from FRS and see whether there is, uh, well, there is a plenty of guidance for attorneys, for people in general, of course, there's stacks, but whether they do have some sort of boiled-down process, boiled-down sort of information that they routinely advise. And then I could feel quite comfortable with asking district staff to provide that, you know, for people who are, have been indicated that they're going to retire or upon exit interview or whatever the case may be, so that that at least should answer a bulk of their questions. But people also need these things for retirement planning in advance of what am I going to do? Not just, okay, I'm retired, now what? You know?
Right.
So, that could also be subject to a seminar, and I know FRS has sometimes put on seminars in the past, they may be willing to do such a thing. With the guidance coming from them directly, it's always much more, you know, safe that they weren't relying on, you know, anyone else's opinion or advice as to their own rules, you know? So, I can, I can look into what guidance exists and find out a way that we can disseminate it in a better way.
That would be great, because it's, it's also all in the way the information is being disseminated too. And there's just been too many times where, long-term, excellent employees, they've got sadness in their eyes. They feel like the door was always open to me, this is my family, this is my work family, this is my work home, and then whoop, boom, you're done.
And if they made a decision five years ago, they have to stick it out. They have to, they have to do it.
It's like a temporary restraining order, can't come back for a year.
Yes, thanks. Yeah, and there's another aspect to this too, and it, 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 uh, it's, uh, let's just call it like double-dipping, you know, that type of thing. We, we've dealt with that over on the, on the sheriff's side, law enforcement, uh, where somebody goes off, they come back, boom, they're right into the job, and it's, it gets a perception, uh, that they're doing something perhaps legal, but, but im- maybe improper, let's just say. And teachers need to be able to cleanly go from the classroom into retirement. That's a noble thing, without any emotional, social baggage. And then, once retired, they own their retirement. Their, their, their use of their time in retirement has nothing to do with the school district, really. It belongs to them. And if they choose to come back, so if we had some kind of a routine standard that's maybe in a general sense a runway for someone with experience, a retired teacher, uh, pretty exciting to be able to do it without carrying this negative connotation like they're doing some kind of a, of a negative trip. Because that is something that on an individual basis can cause that person never to go back to something they would truly like to go back to, because of the perception, the negative perception. So, I, I would love to see something clean, concise, no, it doesn't carry everything. No, it's a general idea of what you do if you're an airline captain, and then you come back and you go into the FAA, it avoids conflict of interest, whatever it is. Boom, it's a path, and this is a viable, legitimate path. Boom, no implications of impropriety. Thank you.
Okay. So, I have it as, create pathways for retired teachers to come back into the classroom faster, which would require adjustments to drop in FRS requirements. My, my question to Dr. Gullett, we had talked about briefly, job sharing, mentoring, part-time, those would all be district-run if we were able to get the FRS requirements and drop requirements adjusted. So, I'm gonna remove that part because that would be something that the district would then do if, in fact, we had a faster pathway for retirees to get back in classrooms.
I do know that the FRS computation is something that is likely going to be a slow-moving process because of the fact that it doesn't just impact school systems.
I understand. Because I have another one I wanted to bring up about that too, but.
Right.
Um, if I may, Chair, Vice Chair Campbell, um, that is correct. That is district-based, the, separately from the FRS, the, uh, the part-time job sharing, we've already had the team moving on that since I arrived, so those opportunities exist. So, yes, that-
So, while we're talking FRS and with the question computation, I know that what I, what I would be suggesting here is something that would take actually a year-long study and so forth. But this is something I've harped on for a while. I may put it in mine, you guys don't have to put it in yours, but allowing new employees the opportunity to use district-required FRS investments to their tuition or student loan reimbursement instead. I know that the FRS, I know that the legislature just made school districts put even more money into the FRS per employee, but if that extra percentage, if that employee could actually use that instead for their tuition reimbursement or student loan reimbursement and give them that flexibility, I think that would be more of a benefit to especially our younger, um, employees. You guys may disagree with that. I even talked to Jessica Dennis Seawitz about it, and she's like, it would take a whole year-long, like, computation analysis and what that would do. So, I, I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Chair, uh, for me, it would be amazingly complicated. I, I barely understand what you just said.
[laughing]
And it would be very, very complicated. We're talking again, we're still talking about going to the legislature with this.
Yes, this would be going to the legislature, yes.
Wow, uh, wow. I would say no, simply because it's so complicated. It's some kind of a procedural issue that's associated with possibilities, and, and I-
But it's a law they have in place right now, so they would have to make adjustments.
Yeah, and I despise the idea of that level of bureaucratic, uh, legislative complication that nobody can understand.
Well, here's this, here's the challenge, Mr. Browning. Legislature already dictates how much money school districts have to put into the Florida retirement system. So, if, in fact, that employee was able to say, I don't want all that money going into Flori- my money going into, that you're putting in for me into the Florida retirement system. Instead, I have $30,000 in student loans that I would like a portion of my money that's going, that you're requiring to go to retirement, to actually pay off those student loans. Instead, that would give the ability through, uh, personal choice that an employee's allocated resources that the legislature gives them because they're working for a school system.
Are we sending it to the, to, are we, are we paying off loans now?
No.
Students you-
Not at all, no, zero.
Is a new thing that you want to do?
Yeah, that, yes, absolutely. This would be brand-new. Because we're trying to bring more people into the teaching profession and-
It sounds too complicated for me.
And retain.
And retain.
Yeah, it sounds too complicated for me. Uh, there's a, it, anything that falls in, like this, the recent thing that came out of forgiving loans, it just has disrupted the nation, simply because some people paid for their apartments, some people paid for all sorts of expenses, some people, oh, we can't all go to college. Wait, wait a minute, hold on just a minute. There is money flying around for these things, and the distrust level, and once you introduce something like that, you kind of jump on that wagon and like, whoa. I'm trying to clean up, go back to a teacher, a schoolhouse, a teacher, education, reading, writing, arithmetic. That is where my heart is. If we can go there, all this other stuff, advocating it adds to what can become a nightmare of regulation and bureaucracy. So, that's just where I am, I, and, and it may be a great idea, but I can't, I can't abide the load that's dropping on teachers, uh, because it's driving them from the platform. And for me, I want it to be clean, clear, simple, that's it, don't do their, no, no, I'm, I'm just, no. It's too complicated. I can't understand it.
I-
Just right here, right now. Like, whoa, wait a minute.
Because private business does it all the time.
What am I agreeing to?
Private business offers tuition reimbursement and assistance and stu-
Whoa.
They do it all the time.
Okay.
It's a for-profit model-
Sorry.
That the government doesn't have right now.
Yeah, sorry, and I, you know, it's, it's, it's very anecdotal for me, personal. It's a personal bias. I like it to be clean and clear.
Ms. Thor.
Hmm. I would say that if it's something that you're energetic and passionate about, that never hurts to run it up the flagpole. You know, um, it's worthy of consideration. Um, having worked in both the private and the public sector, I experienced tuition reimbursement, which was, I did my part. I got the grade, I got my money back.
Right.
What I spent it on from there was completely up to me. I like that. That was very clean. So, you know, complicated concept, and I'm sure that it can be refined. You're bringing it up as a raw idea, so I'm not gonna knock it out.
My first thought is, I am agreeing with Mr. Browning in the sense that I'm thinking it would probably be very difficult, I think, to hone in on that because we have teach, we have all types of different employees and different, what they make and stuff like that. Um, you brought up retention, and I've heard a lot about the FRS, um, program today, and I think maybe if people were a little bit more knowledgeable on what their, our FRS, what their FRS looks like, should they stay in Marion County public schools, um, I think they might be surprised at the benefits that they received. And should they stay with this, when they look at their retirement package, you know, there's their pensions. If you have sick leave, you can bank. There's a lot of money that I think people are not accounting for, and I've always said this, um, from the get-go. You know, people see their paycheck and they think that's all they're getting, but in reality, with their FRS, it's probably more significant than they realize, and especially the longer that they stay in the system, they probably would be pleasantly surprised. I personally would like to see us as a district, give our employees that knowledge. You know, and, and it's easy to throw out, like, go onto myFRS.gov or, you know, whatever it is now. But if there's a way that we could inform our employees, and especially those that are on the brink, they've been here 15, 20 years, they're thinking about leaving, maybe let them see what their retirement's gonna look like if they stay till 30. It might truly be that deciding factor. And so, um, if Allison's passionate and wants to do that study, I can back that. Me personally, I think it's very complicated, and I'm not really sure how that would work because I think, yeah, in the beginning, you might be paying off that loan or whatever, but how's that gonna look later, is what I'm thinking. Like, when I'm 60 and, you know, might be ready to retire, the choice I made at, you know, 30, so, I don't know, I don't, I almost feel like, not that it would entrap them, but I just think, you know, I don't know. That's my thoughts.
I, I think the reason that I, I have it as a thought, and again, I'm, I'm putting this, and so when Elena sees it, I'm putting, these are the board discussed, and this is what I'm gonna do personally. So, she's gonna see that separate. But I, I think part of my thought process on it, frankly, is generationally, there've been multiple studies that say, current generate, millennials and younger, that generation, they are not staying in jobs for 30 years. They're just not. End of story. No, I mean, data upon data that validates that. And so, if we were able to keep them for 10 years, I mean, then they'll have a portion, a little bit of retirement that they can take whenever they go to wherever else they go and change their total career change. Um, and, and so that's part of the thought process. If we can entice them to get that teaching certificate, to do the things that they need to do while they're here, and probably have the understanding, they're, they're not gonna be here for 30 years. I mean, we, we have, as a district, I, I think that's in part why districts around the country are struggling because teachers that have been with districts for 30 and 40 years are retiring, and there aren't people behind them because no one else is staying that long. Once you reach a certain generational gap, people just aren't working that, you know, in the same field for that long. And that, that's part of the thought process for me, is that if we can, you know, maybe they will feel that emboldened, you know, connection to the district or to where, whatever the profession was, that helped them pay off that student loan, and maybe they will stay longer because, but to say that today's millennial is considering what it looks like to have a retirement in 30 years from now, while they should, I understand they should, it's just not reality, in my opinion. Um, and I think the data is proving that. So, anyway, that's, that's the reason, I'll move it down to my own thought process.
Well, let me, let me chime in on this one.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, while I do think it's gonna be, there are a lot of complications and computations that would have to be dealt with on that, I, I, I like the idea of, um, of this because it gives employer, employees options on what, what this does, what I hear this doing, or possibly doing, it creates a dugout, it creates a bench. Right now, we don't have a bench. We, 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 we're, folk are leaving the game, and we don't have a, we don't have that reserve-
Right.
-group of people that are coming in in droves. And so, what this does is just gives an option. I don't think that is, I think it would be something that legislators would have to work. I remember when they changed it from, and Kelly and Nancy, you guys were in, Dr. Gullett too, and Elena, when it, they made, they gave us the option of going from the FRS to the investment plan.
Right.
It created an option, and that helped some people say, hey, I'm out, Dennis. Some of us said, we out, and some said, we're gonna stay in it, and we'll, we'll figure out what we do. So, I think this, this gives us a way of creating that reserve group of people putting on the bench. So, I'm, I'm not, I, do I think it's gonna be extremely complicated?
Of course.
And a whole bunch of computations? Oh, definitely. And I think it would take, I, I think our, our state would move so slow on this one.
Probably.
But if enough people are talking about it, at least it puts the conversation out there because we have to do something to, to get that back, that, that reserve back up in, in education. That's how-
If you all want to have an interest, add it to yours, then you can add it to. And that's what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna definitely add it myself.
And it'll be interesting to hear you report back and see what, see if you get any blank faces.
Right.
And, and just see, gauge the, the response, you know? I'm really open to any kind of innovative idea, and it's a very innovative idea, and it's got a lot of legs to it, that's for sure, like a centipede, it seems right now, but, um, no, hey, it's your time with your representative.
Right.
You know, see what they have to say, and then maybe whatever you bring back will be something that'll be easier to get behind as a legislative priority for the whole board.
Right.
Ms. Thor.
Yes. So, okay, I, and I agree, private side, board side, uh, a sales pitch, this is sort of a sales pitch, sales strategy, a marketing strategy, uh, and they're complicated because they relate to the customer, and you want to accommodate the customer, and they're, to, to bring that to a legislator as a board, uh, it needs to be a whole lot more thought out. I believe, um, as a- I believe, as a professional marketer, if you confuse the pitch with something that is, let's just say, in its infant stages of thinking, you, you kind of derail your entire message. And I'll just throw this out to you, if, as you go for it, as a, as an individual, that's where you have power. A general board idea should be pretty seasoned, it should be pretty put together, so it can be in a couple of sentences, and boom, it's not that controversial, you know, like that. So, that would be my advice to the board, if you want to be effective at the legislative level, at the governor's level, at the Department of Education level, if you want to be effective, keep it simple, keep it direct, and have it tuned to what they're trying to do with the state of Florida. If you do, boom, it works, you're, you're likely to have more success. If it's a, whoa, it's out there, and a lot of different things, it's hard to, I, I can't even pull it together in a meeting, as to whether or not the teachers would like it, the, the district, the community, the, would this help the students, would it not, you know, i- it's complicated. And so as a marketing strategy, I don't know, I don't know, but, but in order for me to vote for it, I, it's gotta be simple and clean and clear and go, you know.
Mr. Browning, with all due respect, I also have extensive marketing strategic rhetoric experience, I'm completely fine with what my position is in one sentence, so I'm, I'm good. I believe that there are people in the legislature that would understand what I'm trying to accomplish with that, and it would attract new students and new teachers into the field, which is exactly what we're trying to do. So moving on, I do have another thought, and it's something that Dr. Gullett and I have spoken about, and I want to see if this is how this should be worded, because this is the one thing I didn't bring up, to provide opportunities to lower-performing school districts to offer data-driven, diverse, and enriching pathways for students.
What does that mean?
What did you just say?
So, okay, and, and she's shaking her head, because she knows exactly what I'm talking about. So I'll give, I'll give you the example, and then I'll tell you what I said. We were not allowed as a district to offer a virtual middle school.
Oh.
Because, though we had the data to back it up, though we had the parent support, and we could prove that we had a certain number, but we were not allowed, because we were not classified as a high-performing districts, because, a district, because they have written into legislation, Representative McLean did it, they've written into legislation that high-performing districts have the opportunity to create these diverse and enriching pathways for students, they do. But because we were not in that top 10% that we want to be, and we will be eventually, we weren't afforded that opportunity. So here's what I wrote, provide opportunities to lower-performing school districts to offer data-driven, diverse, and enriching pathways for students.
I got you.
So you're kind of taking from the wording of the legislation as it is now, which is very confusing, and, but, that's, but I understood, that is true mirroring right there.
One thing we also learned is that it's really important for our students to be in front of the teacher, if we have really good teachers, and so, can you, give me another example beside virtual, that could be used in that, or is it districtly virtual?
Outside of virtual, yeah.
Outside of virtual, giving us the opportunity, give me another example, Dr. Gullett, data-driven, diverse pathways that we might not be able to do right now.
There could be vocational and job programs.
Potentially, uh, let me think, that, that's the, that's the one opportunity that I know for sure that we're not able to do, would it be gender-specific school, like, I'm not certain what else we wouldn't be able to do.
Perhaps, something that came about recently with regard to appointment of personnel based on prior experience, proven school improvement, which comes in the Bureau of School Improvement, providing the ability to make the research-based decisions that are best for our students, without being confined to some of the current requirements. So I think virtual's one of them, but there are others as well. So, i- if we want to see improvement, we have to have the ability to use research-based practices to do such, and not wait until we've had the improvement to do what others already doing, right? If it works for the high-performing districts, why can't we do those practices?
Right.
So, thinking differently, providing some of those specialized programs of study, teachers with different backgrounds and subject area expertise, taking away some of those restrictions to allow us to look at the evidence and the data that supports that it's working. Right now, we're restricted from doing a number of those things.
Chair.
Mr. Brown, go ahead. Yeah, okay, just in a general sense, this, this really hits me unprepared, but it's a standard. I would rather see us move and meet the standard than lower the standard. I am seeing standards drop, and this isn't a, a judgment on, on education in general, well, maybe it is, standards dropping, where, where did that come from? Where did that go? Like cursive or something like that, reading, writing, you can't read the Constitution, you can't read the Declaration of Independence, all these things happen, because the standards get lowered. I like, if, if there was a reason, and I'd have to hear from McLean as to why he set that standard, why he proposed it, and why it was passed, but that standard is the key, as long as we, if we wanted to achieve that, boom, jump, jump in, or go ahead and ask. I like that argument that Superintendent just made, but that was an argument to somehow give us a pathway to achieving, without lowering the standard, and I don't know, I'd, I'd have to know more about, for me to vote for it, I'd have to know more about how and why those standards were set, because the, the bureau, the bureaucracy that naturally grows in large, well-funded organizations is a disaster to efficiency, just, that's just kind of something that I think stands out there, at least it does in my mind. So if we can maybe ask for a special probationary jump up to, maybe an avenue, maybe a path or, I love what you just said, Superintendent, that does not lower the standard, but it takes somebody who is saying, hey, look, we're down here, we don't qualify, however, I would like to be able to submit something that says that I am really working toward this, and that I think that, maybe with some very close supervision, because we're, we're getting that now from out of the state, close supervision, that I think we can get up there, and that might take us there. That's where we're trying to go, and it might make, get Board Member Browning to hush, you know, like that, bang, we just get there, and, and it's a crick, it was beautiful what you just said, so if you, and I'll direct people to it, it's beautiful, the idea of, golly, we're striving, we're working, we're trying to get to that top 10, and, and be high-performing, and that's what we want to do, and that's where we're going, that's where we're dedicated, and I see this as an impediment. And I would like to retain the integrity of the structure you have, but I'd like to create a, a pathway that takes me there, in my responsibilities. Now that, I can, I can, I can go there, I didn't lower the standard, I created another probationary move that takes you up, and boom, you accomplish it, you're there, hey, I like this avenue, I like the way they got there, that was great, for example, thank you, Chair.
So I can move that to a personal priority if you would like, but the way I have written it now says, provide opportunities to lower-performing school districts to offer data-driven, diverse, and enriching pathways for students. Opportunities for research-based practices that work for higher-performing districts and are best for students should be available to lower-performing districts as well.
What's your last sentence?
Opportunities for research-based practices that work for higher-performing districts and are best for students should be available to lower-performing districts as well.
Right there, that says it.
Right there.
That says it.
I can remove the first.
And, and to me, it dovetails very nicely with parent empowerment, you know, we had parents that came to us and said, you know, I think, what was it, 300, 200, or 300 middle schoolers were identified as having done very well, excellent parent support with virtual instruction. Virtual instruction is nothing new, you know, we, we've had Marion Virtual, we've had Florida Virtual, it's, it's innovative, it works for some kids, and so, why would being a high-performing district versus a low-performing district, data's data, so why should that be an impediment? I think your last sentence is, for simplicity is the ask.
Okay.
Let's just make.
I can't get there with that, simply because it, it lowers the standard, if we can, if we can, what the Superintendent just said, we, we do, we do not lower the standard, we request a, let's just say, for lack of a better word, a probationary, temporary way to work ourselves into this specific ask, because we see a, we see light at the end of the tunnel, I'm paraphrasing what you said, but that way, we can go there, research-based, we can always find research and, and all that, so that lowers the standard, now everybody can do it. I like, there's a reason for the top, and it's just my opinion, and, thank you, there's just my opinion, so I, that, that's where I am, I, no, no.
So Mr. Throw is on board with what I have written now, I've removed the first sentence, anybody else want me to move it to my personal, or do you want me to leave it on?
Kids are working towards the same types of diploma, the same types of, in, in middle school, you have to have a certain number of units to move up to high school, so, so to me, it's much less a question about standards, because that base is already covered, what we're asking for is the ability to be innovative, to, to target instruction towards each and every student, and when we find groups of students that benefit from a certain type of instruction, like virtual, and have thrived, to me, that is violating a student's and parent's rights not to be able to offer it. Why, because we're not in a district? Uh-uh, I can't get behind that.
Right.
And so we don't need to be unanimous on this anyhow, right? There, there's no need for that, this is a general, it's a general, you, you have your, you make your, make your comments, and we're, right, we're looking out ahead, and boom, that's just the way.
I think we're trying to come to consensus on what we're gonna be asking the legislature for via the Florida School Boards Association, and then whatever doesn't make the cut, we'll take forward ourselves as, as a board.
Yeah, well, or as a, as a board member, as a, or not as a board member, as a individual. So I, and I get that personally.
As a board, as a board, remember when we went together and sat with our legislature, legislators, and we had our little short form, those were things that we all agreed on as a board to promote.
Okay, so we had, so we do need to get together, I'm not on board with that, so I'll just say that, I'm not on board with lowering, asking them to lower the standards.
It's not lowering the standard, it's allowing every student to have the same opportunity, regardless of the district they're in.
Actually, opening up, giving more, um, opportunities for other students that our district did not have.
Right.
This time, because we were considered to be lower-performing than some of the others. I agree, we, we found out through COVID, through all this, that kids need to be in front of teachers, but I still want us to have all options available for our district when other districts are doing it.
If I may, Chair, just, just an additional note of clarification, this is about funding. We did not, we were not able to receive the funding, I would define that from, from my role, as not providing funding for student parental choice option, for data that showed it was working for the students. I think we all agree face-to-face is, is optimum, but for those 300 students, the data supported that they were learning and, and progressing, and it didn't afford us the opportunity for funding to support student of parental choice, and that's, from my seat, a concern.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Which also means, if I'm thinking through this accurately, that I could open a charter school for 300 kids, middle school age, virtual, with parent support, based on the parameters that we just shared.
Data that was given.
The data that was given, working towards the same middle school standards, and I'd be allowed to do it, is that correct?
No, essentially, yes.
Or you'd get funded for it.
Yes.
That's what you said.
That's what I mean, being allowed to do it, I would get the funding to do it, yes. So, I, I don't know.
Which takes resources away from our district.
Right.
And puts it somewhere else, that's, that's why.
I wish you would rethink your position, Mr. Browning.
Yeah, well, I hate lowering standards, so.
It doesn't lower the standard.
Well, wait a minute, excuse me, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I can't continue to have you say the same words over and over, and they're inaccurate.
Ma'am, I can't have you being judgmental on my comments, thank you very much, you get to have your comments, I get to have my comments, thank you very much, nobody, nobody gave you permission.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown, with your comments, Mr. Brown.
To judge my.
Mr. Brown, go ahead with your comments, please.
Continue.
It's fair.
Please.
So, my thought is, we're going to the legislature with this. We say, Stan, Representative McLean, you set some standards, low performers don't get reimbursed, we would like to see, we'd like to see a pathway for, I'm just gonna say, probationary achievers that are working their way diligently toward the standards that you set in your legislation. We would like permission to be able to go there, and maybe, maybe consider some temporary funding for us, as you monitor our probationary pathway toward this. Or, sir, perhaps you eliminate, you know, maybe reconsider the entire establishment of standards, and the reward to those that have displayed the competency to be able to be at the higher level, and whatever criteria you were using. So, sir, that's a bit wordy, however, I think it's something you might want to consider. Now, if it's sort of in that vein, I guess I could go there, but I do not want to lower standards for high-achieving districts, because you're gonna have to be a high-achieving district, if you're gonna function in the state of Florida, coming up, like, right now, what we just talked about with this grand jury, and mismanagement, for example. Everything we do needs to be looked at, hard, and, 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 and gotten to the competency level that our children, our students deserve. So, I don't want to take, if, if it's a platoon, if, if I'm a battalion commander, I don't want to lower any of the standards, I want to raise anybody that's not up to speed, and I will work a pathway for them, I would be open to that, I think, I'll, I'll, I'll pick up the phone after the meeting and talk to Stan about this one, and say, Stan, what's up with that? You know, can we wiggle that thing a little bit? Our Superintendent is saying, she thinks she can nail this, well, then I'd like to see a plan, he said, well, give me a plan. You know, that I can see, because it doesn't lower the standards, but it does create a pathway, that, that's a road I can go down. So, I, you know, and, and I, I don't want to be, I don't want to be confrontational to you, Allison, I, I, but I, I'd like to be able to just advocate a position, it's the only time we can talk, in an open meeting, I'm advocating a position, and then come with yours, rather than be judgmental of mine, that's, that's, it's a personal request on my part.
Thank you, Mr. Board Member Brown.
Thank you.
Chairman, please continue.
So, if we have a majority that believes this.
Let's move forward, thank you, you heard.
Thank you. So, the last two that I had on here, and I don't know if Dr. Gullett had anything else that was on that initial topic, but was, somehow, I believe we do need to request capital-dollar allocation from legislature, I woke up thinking about what this could look like, I think we cannot call it PICO. I know PICO stands for Public Education Capital Outlay, I understand that, but I think we have to completely rebrand the concept, and, and rebrand, I'm using that word purposefully, I'm using that word purposefully, because when we go in saying PICO, they know that PICO dollars mean the funding that's associated with PICO was from landline telephones, so automatically, PICO means landline telephones, and that's, there's a correlation that never can separate. So, I believe that we should creatively come up with something that is either asking for them to create a grant process for buildings that are 50 years or older, like, I- Like, I, I'm, what is the, what would be the request apart from just, we need capital allocation dollars? Apart from that, would it be that, and I'm, I'm literally, I woke up thinking about, what could it be? You know, could it be those that are 50 years and older? And if there was something that we could receive from the legislature as far as a grant to help those buildings, then for Pheasanton and Anthony and East Marion and Stanton Weersdale and just start going down the list that are 50 years and older, we could allocate those resources to that and then our facilities dollars that we already have could be allocated to, I, I don't know, but I'm open to suggestions on how we can somehow rest, request allocation for capital dollars. We know that there, that other districts have multiple funding sources for capital and facilities. We currently do not. And so I am open to suggestions. The only reason I thought about setting aside grant resources specifically for those buildings that are 50 years or older, I, I thought that that could be a creative way to get what, get to the heart of what we ultimately need without calling it PICO. So, I'm open to dialogue.
We know, we know, we know the past few years, we've asked for.
PICO.
Ever since I've been on the board, we, we put that PICO one out there and every year it's actually been just not discussed, but we know that PICO funding still does exist.
Right.
It just doesn't come to us.
And it's so much less than it used to be.
And it's a lot less. There has to be, you're right, Ms. Campbell, in some kind of way that we have to figure out some more capital coming to school districts for buildings and infrastructure of, of our district. So, I, I, I know you specifically said the word rebranding, but we also know that's a hot word right now, rebranding, but there has to be something, yeah.
We just can't call it PICO again. We, we know what we need, we just can't call it PICO again because it's fallen on deaf ears.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, yeah, and well, and the PICO idea, it's, that's the landlines, right? That's the landlines.
PICO stands for Public Education Capital Outlay. That's what PICO stands for. See, you just said PICO is landlines because that's whatever.
But isn't that it? Isn't that it?
That's how it has been funded.
Yes, okay, that's the way it's funded. So, from a marketing point of view, from this board member, don't ever go down the road in a, in a, in a way that gives an automatic no. Because it, it's like you're bundling yourself up with this. You're asking for money. Now, once you start asking for money and you're saying, PICO, it's like, that's a lost leader, you're not going there. It's just not going to happen. It, it's like bundling yourself up with something that's so old, it's like horse halters or something, some revenue source. So like, it's, it's like it's not going to work and it hasn't worked and it's not going anywhere. And so why get a no? How about we go down a road of yeses? In sales, that's what you want. You don't want to start them down the road of saying no, that kind of get emboldened and encouraged to say no. And once they start down that road, they say, oh, I get to say no? Oh, all right then, and they can really roll. So, I, I, I just make that point from a marketing point of view. But the idea of more money, I would say that if we suggested that perhaps we're improving efficiency, we're doing this positive, this positive, we've got a budget that went up like 10%, then it went up the next time compounded 15%. Then it goes up the next time 20%. Then going in with a message that I'd like more money and we're kind of, we're kind of floating in money, this $125 million extra bonus kind of a thing. I think you end up creating a no. I, I, I'm just, I, I don't know how to characterize that request, that ask, when in fact, like the shutters on our old building or the roof hadn't been looked at in 40 years. Well, it, did you ever see a person who can't make the decision on, on, on buying a new car until the old one breaks? So they just kind of let it go and then pretty soon with the lack of maintenance, the transmission or the generator, something, air conditioning, something's going to break and that makes the, the decision for them. Well, that is so dysfunctional. That's what the grand jury's looking at. That, they're looking at that kind of thought process where money is, is like being wasted. It's like, whoa, where did this come from? It's, it's, we don't have to defend bureaucracy because bureaucracies tend to do that, especially state owned bureaucracies. They tend to do that. So I think if we're creative, perhaps we could do something positive that's from an efficiency point of view. And then perhaps move that into a matching situation, something like that. In other words, get to some money, have, have a yes and have some money come out. Otherwise, you get a no and you get to grumble about the no, but that doesn't take you anywhere and you go another year and the buildings don't get, don't get done. But if we go at the buildings and maybe we address some of the, some of the issues that come up on a regular basis and we get efficient, we've got this close to a billion dollars now, and we start drilling that money in and now suddenly we start becoming that steward, instead of wanting more, I don't even think we could manage more. It's like an obese budget. So if we could show that level of responsibility, that would encourage them to say, wow, I want to hear more about what this district's doing. That is exciting. Wow, could you all come up and talk to us? Wow, I want to see more about that. That is exciting. That I can go somewhere with. That, I, I, I see light at the end of the tunnel for that. If I'm up there in the next few years, that's the kind of thing that I would love to see from a district. I would love to see that level of competency. Of course, I'm biased because it was, it's a line of thought that I'm advocating, but, but competency, utilization, stewardship, and all of a sudden, maybe an idea like maybe matching. Could we have this? Could we have that? We have this, that, look at what we've done, look at what we've done here, look at what we've done here. Then all of a sudden, wow, I like what I'm seeing here. I, I, I like that report, I like that approach. And then, could you come up and maybe present to the legislature on that? Wow, that is exciting. I like that, that's the best sounding thing I've heard, you know, that kind of thing. So, I can go down that road just because it's old and, and we got money, we got money, and we got money. So, I think we manage, we don't mismanage, we manage, and I think we could do a lot. Our bidding process, our, there's so many things that we could improve on, I don't want to go into that now, but there's so many things we could do. And how exciting would that be? And I know the legislature would be excited because they're, they're looking at the entire state and the governor as well. So, wow, I hope, that's, that's a little bit long-winded, but, and, and, right, I'm a comedian, so it's a little long-winded, but it gets you there, it gets you to some money, it gets you to a yes. Now, this other, I don't think gets you to a yes. I'm needy, I've got the, a giant, my budget doubled since somebody's been on the board. It's not your fault, it's the budget's doubled and the students have laid flat and all of a sudden, we're asking for more money. That's going to get you a no.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
I can add the word matching, but as we are aware, as we all are aware, that our budget has gotten higher than it has in many years, those dollars cannot, many of them, be allocated for facilities, many, many, many of them. So while the legislature may ask for champion districts to come show us how they're maintaining their facilities in such a creative and, and amazing way, I dare say the majority of those have additional funding streams specifically for facilities and capital allocations that this district does not have. Therefore, the way I have this worded is to request for the legislature to create a matching grant process for capital allocations for school buildings 50 years and older. And if you still can't get behind that, I can add it to a personal priority.
I can't get behind that.
I can get behind it.
Me too. And I also think we, in, in that same vein of talking about buildings, we need to, the, we need to be able to have some flexibility on when we can talk about building a new school, other than just going by that FISH report, I think that's what it's called, is the FISH report, based on, based on the county. Every county is different, the landscape and the layout of every county is different. And to be held to a standard that you have to have so much vacancies at certain places when we're experiencing growth in certain areas, that kind of handcuffs us. So I think that conversation has to be, I don't know if that's an individual, I don't know if that's statewide, I don't know how that is, but I know it's a problem that we have here in Marion County. So it kind of goes into some of that same conversation, that same thing, conversation.
I only had one more on my list, and you guys probably have additional things, but I didn't know, this is a Dr. Gullett question, and I'm just going to put it out there publicly and probably shouldn't have before talking about it privately again, but I didn't know if this was the year that this board wanted to request a specific appropriation for enhancement at Marion Technical College. If there was a CTE enhancement program, building something specific for Marion Technical College. So, I think there's more conversation to be had about that. I don't know that this is the avenue.
Is that a program? Or, I'm sorry.
This is, this is the year to discuss it.
It is the year to discuss it.
This is the year to discuss.
It's just dependent on what that would look like. I do think before we actually.
I think we probably need to have some other conversation.
Absolutely, but I'm putting it out there now in September so that before we vote on what our actual legislative priorities are in December or whenever that might be, that we can have a couple of months to figure out what that would look like if this board is interested in pursuing that as an option.
Chair. Yes, sir. Yeah, is that, Ms. Campbell, is that a, would you elaborate? Is that a prog, a teaching program curriculum? Or is that a structure?
What my best analogy would be is the dollars from the legislature specifically appropriated, I'll use College of Central Florida for an example, they've received back to back appropriations from the legislature specifically for their health science building.
Structure?
It is, it is.
The structure?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
Structure and program.
Structure and program, because they.
Okay, so both, academics and.
Creating the structure for the programs, yes.
And structure and program.
Yes.
Combination, yes, sir.
Okay, combination, got it.
So this would potentially be, if we want to go down that pathway, of requesting financial appropriation specifically from the legislature for program enhancement, including facility construction for program, program or programs at Marion Technical College.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, we've talked about it briefly and I could weigh in lightly on it, that is, we are at a position in the country right now in transportation, surface transportation of electric versus petroleum, let's, let's, ice they call it. And there is an opportunity to, in, in five years, there's, that's supposed to be over 50% electric versus ice internal combustion. So, perhaps, and I do know that in the Midwest right now, there are like technical, I'm going to use this in quotes, technical college situations being built because in order to handle that whole technical end, somebody's got to be in, you know, teaching the youngsters about this. And I'm talking, you're, you're, we are right in the triangle of the University of Florida, Central Florida Community, oh, I'm sorry, University of Central Florida, Tampa, we're in that triangle. We could be a national center and, and all those start, those dreams start with a small item. So this might be something that, and, and, and this board member can get behind this from a, from an opportunity, because you graduate. First meeting I went to as a board member, I asked, well, do we have a program for, for this EV? And we're one year closer and this is 22 and that's 25 and 26, it's going to be a big number, percentage. So if you graduate, if you're going in, they were talking about sixth graders, seventh grader, eighth graders, four years for co, for high school, there's not going to be much internal combustion, change in oil and stuff, there's going to be other things and you've got to be on top of that. And I think that the board, the legislators would jump toward that. I don't want to speak for, for one of our senior senators, Baxley, Senator Baxley, but Dennis has, has advocated this specifically and bringing this forward. I mean, they are geared and ready to go. You want to jump on this one, jump on it because it is an opportunity of a lifetime and it is an exponential curve that's going up and we're at the bottom stage of it. And, and, and like our, our students coming out of a program like that as a senior could be so sought after, is to be astounding. So, boom, you've got my support on that one. And I know Perry, I have not talked with him, Senator Perry, specifically on that subject, but I have talked in generalities, Baxley, absolutely. I, I would, I would, I would put my neck out just to say that from your earlier comment, your, your, your technological building and program, if we went down that approach, you would get an automatic yes and you'd probably get everybody and your brother trying to copy you. But if we were out ahead of it, we may just nail that program. And, you know, I, 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 I will back, I will back you all day long in that area because I like sending somebody out that can then teach at Princeton. AI is a huge, huge field and it's going forward. EV, huge field and it's going forward and that's where the money's going to be. So, yes, absolutely, I can get behind that one, if, if it goes down that road.
Any other comments?
I, I, actually, I think that's a really great idea, what Mr. Browning just said about the EV, like getting ahead, like just paying attention to the news. And I know this is probably not for this conversation right now, but really what you just said is very wise, probably a little bit of risk-taking or whatever, but it makes sense to me to be ahead of something, especially when we know it's coming. And I don't know, I haven't done research to know if it's in other schools or what it would look like, but you're right, some things become obsolete.
You get free oil changes for the rest of your life and how exciting is that? And so if we're studying oil changes and, and valve, valve adjustments, you get them free for the rest of your life. So how exciting.
But maybe if we got legislate, I mean, greater plan, whatever, but maybe legislators or Mr. Browning, you're, that's your, you love that, you know, maybe even if you could help.
Oh, good on, I, I.
Facilitate that, help navigate whatever if the board should.
Before the end of the week, before the end of the week, I'll have conversations.
But I think it's wise to be ahead of things, especially when we're vocational and they could go, if they have whatever type of training or whatever they choose to do and they were sought after and that's what we, we want, you know.
I don't think that we've determined specifically the programs that would be in a building that we would build, so I mean.
To get ahead of that, right.
I, I, I agree, I agree. Maybe there's aeronautical opportunities, maybe, I mean, my high school back in Tennessee has a flight simulator in the high school. I mean, that, there, there are different things that we currently do not have in this district that having new building opportunities could give us that. So perhaps if we want to pursue that and vote on that in the future, maybe Dr. Gullett can bring back some ideas of program opportunities that we could potentially put in addition to dollar amount that we might need to be asking for. I mean, because that's a whole separate piece to that. separate piece to that.
Well, you have to have a plan, because if we just go up to them and say, hey, we want money because we wanna build.
No, I completely agree.
They're not gonna, they're gonna say no, but if we have a good, solid plan of something we wanna do and where we wanna go, then they really might listen.
Money's out there now, money's out there from the industry, from, you know, and, and, yes, government is getting involved in it, but the money is out there already, and these technical colleges are going, they're just moving ahead. And it's, I don't wanna call it a technical college, it's more a technical institute, if you will, maybe something like that, where they, you know, very specifically, you learn what's going on. This is a whole new world. And when you learn it, boom, in you go, and the money is being invested from outside. It's, it's like this SpaceX, that's coming, and it's coming so fast, and it's so, and we're right in the middle of it, because they launched right here, we got all this going on, Tesla's involved, Ford is involved, General Motors is involved, some of the foreigners are involved, and I guarantee you, American companies are investing. They would love a, an academic center, because that's what they're doing, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, it might be Nebraska, where one was just in, and I jumped on it with some of the legislators and said, hey, we gotta be part of this thing, we gotta be part of it, I wanna do it. I used to be big on a racetrack, because that brings investment from around the world, and it's only about six miles of track, six miles of road, and all of a sudden, you're the center of the universe. Well, this is the center of the universe for the future, and money coming, I, we don't even need the money, we could get the money through that if the superintendent had a program, we get the money through the legislature, we're going up and say, hey, we just need some endorsement, Pasodomo, this is, this is where we're going, and this is what we're doing, and we've got, as a matter of fact, come on, get in a ride, we've got right here, take a ride, a thousand horsepower car sitting right there that I just drove in on, and that's just, just me, that's just an ordinary guy. Thousand horsepower, breaks all the records of anybody, and it's just a car with the seats in it. Well, what the heck? If we can do that and bring money into Florida, the governor would be down here cutting the ribbon. I mean, they're, and so I'm not asking for money, I'm saying how we might use the money. And, and I did kinda jump ahead, because I have had this conversation in the last, maybe six weeks, multiple times, so it isn't something that just popped up. So anyhow, it's, it's a source of money, we can bring it in rather than ask for it. Now, that's one way you jump to the head of the class, in, in terms of getting to that top ten percent, or ask, you bring that to the table, and all of a sudden, wow. And if you, if you don't believe, i, if you're, if you're on the bench, or you're on the fence, we'll throw Browning at you, and that'll push you right over the fence.
Ms. King, can you finish your comments?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, I think that was great conversation, I think it would be really helpful if you could help navigate through that, because it is so new and you're so knowledgeable in that, you know, and probably there needs to, you know, help guide or lead, just give that information.
And there are foundations that would throw money in it, there are.
Mr. Browning, Mr. Browning, let her, let her finish her comment, you did it three times.
I know, I'm passionate about, I'm, I love money. I love wealth, and I love education, and if we can make these students, and we can make this district, there, now you're talking about management, you go forward with this enormous power of education. This is the center, this is the Princeton, this is the Harvard, this is the central Missouri State of this issue. Wow, now we're talking, now we're talking, and it would be.
Can Board Member King please finish?
Yeah, I know it, you're gonna have to restrain me, sir. Yeah, absolutely, and, and, and remember, when I say that I don't get my due, please remind me of this, absolutely, thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Okay, no, that's good, I think that was just good conversation, and it gives us a way to go, and Allison, I think you got the approval to add that to your list.
I do, I do.
I think you do, so if we can.
Make sure EVs in there.
I do think, also, Ms. King, I miss Campbell, that you should pursue that one as well. I, I do think we, the ask needs to be specific, because we know what Florida looks like right now, and this area looks like. We are in the center of the state, we are in close proximity to the Space Coast, and all the things that's going on with the Space Coast, trying to go to the moon, trying. Mr. Browning.
Thank you, sir.
I guess this is your one time that you, that we all on board with you, so you just, you're just riding out with this one. So we, we are in agreement, and, and we're in agreement that, and, but not only with the Space Coast, also with the equine industry and world equestrian that's happening here as well. So I guess our ask needs to be specific to Marion County and Florida, so I don't have an issue with.
May I?
If I could finish.
Yes, sir, I gotta throw this in, because it's for you. It's a tell, I want a tell, and this board can tell. This is a tell, not an ask, because we have the capacity here. We're geographically set, we're intellectually set, we have the people, you know, our retirees, we have the Space Coast, we have the governor, we have, we've got the whole thing. This is a, a tell, this is the way it's gonna be, folks, and we can do this for you, it's a tell, not an ask.
Mr. Browning, I think you really need to lead the charge on this one.
He's gonna lead it, that's passion right there.
Since, we, I think we need to, I think that needs to be your swan song, your exit, as you're going off the board, I think you need to make it happen for us.
That's right, it could happen.
Now you stop talking. We put it in your lap, and you stop talking. I think you need to make it happen, Mr. Browning.
When you have the chairman, when you have the chairman, acknowledge that program, and then it's a tell, and then we can light the candle for our governor, for our legislators, and for, for Manny Diaz, then we have done something, and let's do it, and there's no reason not to. And that's exciting, and I guarantee you, we will be brought in with open arms. We won't be busting in, you know, oh, could we have a few minutes with you? And in Pico, we got, we gotta talk about old, old funding things we lost. No, we're gonna bring money, we're gonna bring prestige, we're gonna bring education, we're gonna make some things happen, and we've got a board member, we got a board member, we got a board member, we got a board member, we've got a, we've got a district, and we're lighting the candle. Now, how exciting is that?
Mr. Browning, you have your marching orders, we are gonna march with you, it's in your lap, let's, don't, not, I don't wanna talk about it anymore, just let's make it happen.
Let's do it.
Let's make it happen, okay.
I would like to have Dr. Gullett potentially weigh in on it, because, I mean, there will be.
We just wrote the program.
I mean, there's, there's a lot more to it than us just saying, yeah, we wanna add this, I mean, so we, we will need to have the analysis on what the costs would be for whatever this new something looks like, and, and hiring that, the, those staff members directly from the field, in the professional fields, that will need to come in and have the pedagogical support to know how to teach, because they need to have a pathway to becoming certified teachers, and we just explained that earlier on. So I think it all ties together ultimately, so, Dr. Gullett?
Certainly, thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. We created a proposal last year that was shared with some of the members of our legislature, and we are in the process of revising that, but we need to increase the opportunities for our adults in this community, and offer state-of-the-art learning. In order to compete and have them prepare to compete, we need to provide those opportunities, and aeronautics is one of those, we've talked about that already, but there are others out there, and there are other foundations and other means of support, but, but having support from Tallahassee to fund those, it is important, and I wholeheartedly, again, support this.
Chair, I'll throw this in, revenue, not cost, revenue to the state, revenue to the district. I'm talking about leadership. This is the kind of thing, you know, this district is uniquely set with an enormous population of highly successful individuals. Now we're talking about revenue coming in, opportunity, and I guarantee you, we can light this candle, and corporate America will step in with, if we have a level of enthusiasm, and I just sent somebody out to Austin, to the Giga Factory, just simply for information. I have an information dump for SpaceX, for the top, you know, I mean, ready to go, I'll, I'll let anybody use it, it's redundant for me, but it's an information dump of the latest and the greatest, and now if you're hiking somewhere, no matter what, anywhere in the world, you're on a cruise ship, you can at least text out and say, hey, my plane went down, and I'm out here, and I'll tell you where I am in reference to the Milky Way. And we've got these things, and it's happening, so if we're on top of it, we're leaders, and once you're a leader, you kinda own it, you know, you just own it. And we're talking revenue and tell. Sure, there's cost, because we do things, we invest with our revenue, but that's exciting, and I like, we got two board members leaving, and we've got a level of excitement, I see her, her eyes go bright when it talks about opportunity, that's the whole deal. And I'll say, we were up at the cabinet, and she was looking at Discover Marion County, and she was like, ready to cry because of the opportunity, the excitement, and so this is one you can take all the way to the bank, just about as long as you live, you were in on it at the beginning. So, there, we good? We good? Exciting, Superintendent, we're gonna fly out, we're going to, we're, we're heading to Austin.
On the record, we're gonna request it, we don't know what we're gonna request.
I'll pay for it.
We don't know how much we're gonna request.
I'll pay for it.
All right.
Let's go.
Perfect.
You know, we jump in a, we jump in a plane, and I'll fly it.
Publicly.
Please, put that on the record, Kevin.
Absolutely, just committed to funding this new, whatever the legislature doesn't pick up.
And guess what? Guess what? This is exciting. Guess what? This week will be full self-driving. I'll say, Superintendent, why don't we take one of the top EVs to go see Elon? Elon, here we come, I have the superintendent, we're, I'm saying, okay, light that candle, we open, we say, Model S Plaid, we want to go to the Giga Factory in Austin, and let's light the candle now. We don't touch, we don't do any of that, we go.
Browning, you've wrote the check.
We go.
You've wrote the check.
Go.
You've wrote the check. You wrote the check, so we, we gonna, we gonna follow suit, all right? What else?
That's all I had, do y'all have additional?
Other board members, do you guys have any additional priorities, Ms. Thor?
Um, to train all these future innovators and inventors and game changers, they need to come to school. So, I would like to continue the conversation with our legislators about modeling our attendance policies similar to the laws in Georgia, which have been very effective. I've had my own conversation with a couple of our reps about this, there is interest. You know, there's plenty of accountability in the school system for our hard-working teachers and our students, and now we need to get some accountability to make sure that our kids are coming to school. It bothers me as a taxpayer how much money we are spending just to get kids in our doors when it's a requirement. And when I think about homeschool liaisons, I think of school social workers, I think of social work assistants, all wonderful, capable, needed people in certain areas. Those areas don't need to encompass basic attendance, in my opinion. So, there's been interest, I have shared the Georgia statutes, and Florida being Florida, I'm sure that we can improve on those even more, use them as a model, and then put our own angle on it, but it's pretty hard to create an astronaut on a kid, for a kid that is perfectly capable, but yet has missed fifty-six days out of a hundred-and-eighty-day school year, and then that teacher, which could be another death-by-a-thousand-cuts reason that they're leaving the system, is because they're held accountable for that kid's progress, both in reputation and financially. So I, there is nothing I love more than exciting opportunities to make the best out of our community, and, and just, the sky's the limit, literally, the sky's the limit, literally. But to bring it back down to earth here, ain't none of that gonna happen if these kids aren't in school.
And, and you know, Ms. Thor, thank you for that, because I've just recently been made aware of several situations where, what is, this is the third, fourth week of school for us, and I've been made aware of some kids that haven't entered school yet in our district, and, and when I hear that, it bothers me, because my concern is, a month of, of education is gone, that can't be recovered for that kid, and who's responsible? It's not the school necessarily responsible, there are some parents, we've been talking about, parents have the right, this, so I, I would love to see something pushed through to Tallahassee that states that these kids, they need to be in school, whether in K through twelve's public school, charter school, virtual school, they need to be in school, somewhere. Private school, I don't care, as long as they're in school, there should never be a gap of three to four weeks where a parent is saying, well, I kept my kid out because I didn't like the school they were going to, or I didn't like the situation that was going on, so I'm still, there has to be some, if, if we're gonna move, if we're gonna move the needle on Florida, we're gonna move the needle on Marion County, we need to have some things in place where these kids have to be enrolled in school, and not just enrolled in school, but attending school.
Let me give you a real-world example, if I can, about lowering standards, and catering to the lowest common denominator. And this is a school where the occurrences of tardies so high that the school literally changed their whole school schedule, where the fun activities are offered in the morning. Because by the time the kids show up, they've missed the reading, writing, arithmetic that they need to be there for. So those core subjects are now being taught in the afternoon, while concurrently continuing the outreach to the families, and trying to help the families understand that ten minutes late, twenty minutes late, every single day, you add that up, lost time is lost time, that you never get back. So, from my perspective, this is a one-thousand-percent partnership. To have the programs available, to have the choice available, to have the excitement, and then to have it fall flat, because the kids aren't showing up, and there isn't any accountability, and I've lived it, so I'm gonna be passionate about this. Kids getting chance after chance after chance after chance, and by kids, I really wanna say families, because little kids are at the mercy of their families, or somebody to get them to school, especially if they can't walk. And this continues, and you have this bright spirit of a young child that never gets to actualize, because there's only so much a school can do, but I'll say that there's only so much a school should do. We're not here to be nannies, we're not here to take the place of parents, we are here to provide the exciting, innovative opportunities that help create successful adults, and that is a shared responsibility, and root cause, attendance, coming to school, I can't think of anything more foundational than that. So, to bring the balloon back to the ground, we really need support, in my opinion, so that a kid doesn't get to fifteen days, twenty days, thirty days, truancy court, and then gets another chance. There's only a hundred-and-eighty days in the school year, and we're spending so much money, that's probably why our budget has gotten so bloated. We have all of these recovery programs that we're getting money to do, that we can't use them to build schools, but it has bloated our budget. We are trying to catch kids up on education that they have missed, and reading skills that they have missed, because they slap haven't been there, and it's hard to learn when you're not there, I think it's impossible. So my hat is off to these lower-performing schools that are doing everything they can, and more than they should be doing, to support and do what's right for these kids, because we know what the outcome is when people don't get their education, and we love those stories where somebody comes from absolutely nothing, and they pull themselves up by their bootstraps, and they just change the world. There's not that many of them, you know? When, when you think about the big picture, where are most of? Um, when, when you think about the big picture, where are most of them? So, um, I really, really hope that we can get some traction with this.
Yes.
Um, there are states that are doing it and they're higher performing than we are. So I believe they're on to something.
So that's, that's something that legislatively we need to push through FSBA as well as personally?
I'm ready to make it a board, you know, if, if, if FSBA doesn't, if it doesn't make the cut for your list.
Definitely.
And I just found the attendance policy that was emailed to us on April 18th of 2022 from Mr. McGowan. So I'll, I'll add the specific statute number.
Yeah, and I, and I gave copies to all you guys at quite a few meetings ago.
Yes. Mr. Brown?
Yes. Okay, wow, that, uh, good material. I, truancy is a big deal. You've gotta, you can only force so much. Uh, people, customers will walk. They just will. They'll go somewhere else, they'll do something else. Uh, if society has gotten to the point where a, a child no longer has to go to school, you're not gonna figure it out in a school. A specific school.
What do you mean?
Well, what I mean is, if you've got students, uh, it, it's been my experience, if you don't go to school, you get visited by the truancy officer. Uh, well, that's been my experience. That's the way it was. That's the way it was. Now, if that no longer exists, if it doesn't, and, and you're at the judgment of, well, what should we do today, Johnny? Uh, I don't know, Dave, I think we ought to go play baseball or go, go hunting in the woods, you know, whatever. Then i- if, if that's viable, that's what's gonna happen. And, and if we're at that point, if, if I hear you right, that's what you're saying, we're at that point. It, it's, it's sort of, um, the, 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 i- if this is a, if, if this is a university and nobody's matriculating, we're just kind of sitting here. You know, like maybe close the doors. Like you've, you, you don't have a viable operation, if that's the case, if that's the customer. Now, what's, what was really, I think, behind it is a kind of a lackadaisical attitude on the student coming. Students, I get the calls, we get there late, we leave early. We're standing out there, we're waiting three hours in bad weather for the buses to arrive. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues that are associated with students getting there or not getting there. But if, if we can't get, now I'm 100% behind. You must, if you're a certain age, you must go to school. And if that's changed, then, you know, uh, it didn't change when I was going to school. Cause I'd have, I'd have made that, I'd been in the woods, you know, something like that. I, I would not have gone.
Flor- Florida has a truancy law. We just don't have truancy officers anymore in that sense. We have so, school social workers who respond. And then if a, a student has been gone for 15 days or more on excused absences, then at that point, they're defined under Florida statute as a habitual truant. And we can file with the court in order to get the court to demand the parent be there and discuss what's going on and what options exist, if any. Then at that point, however, we're required to give notice, the whole due process, notice opportunity heard thing. We do that. Then that has already eaten up, I think what Ms. Thor was saying, another several days. Then at that point, yeah, weeks, of course.
Well, that's a, that's the problem right there. That, and, 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 and we, we don't need to go through the whole truancy idea, but if you don't have to go to school, you can't leave it to the kid to decide whether they're going to school. You can't do it.
And we don't.
Now, now let me make my point here. I, I wanna, and, and I'll, I'll be, I'll be, I'll be brief, as brief as Don Browning can be, and that is, when you're putting out, when you're putting out 40,000 referrals, this is a pretty tough deal. Now you're in an adversary relationship with kids. You, you, it's a tight program and, and it's sort of like designed in an adversarial way. Uh, you're, you're disrespectful, you're this, you're that, and that's gonna drive people away. I think, I, I see, I, I got a call from someone very current teacher. She's saying, hey, we get 10 minutes to do this, and by the time you get, you can't even get, and, and this is an algebra issue. You can't even get it on the table in 10 minutes. Uh, you, you know, by the time you go through all these steps and then there's a disruption, then you gotta go and do this, then you gotta do this. Then, and the, the rules, the regulations, the, those are the things that we have to address, I think, to improve education. I think it's a very serious, deep matter. Um, and it goes to that 40,000 referrals, because it's almost like a joke, you're getting a referral now. And you have no, you have no, i- i- and, and the, and the child's not coming prepared. And it's like, it's like these adversarial positions. And wow, I think we've got a root cause, I heard you say that several times. I am a believer of root cause solutions. And now you have this, the, the, the choice of school must be more beneficial to the participants than the other choices. Because they're gonna make a choice. And if it's, if you're selling cars, you wanna have them come in and have it be, make sense. So if it's a, if it's some kind of a, of a, of a fair and we're rah rah and we're meeting the deal and we get free food and we get, you know, you may get a few people at that, but you're not gonna cause, you're not gonna solve this problem that, that you were talking to. And so you gotta get in, you really, that's what that grand jury is talking about, mismanagement. Like right down at the core of management, like what we do. And if it's so exciting, it's so much fun, it's so right, you gotta do it. How exciting, then maybe you'll do it. And you don't wanna be, and should we, you know, I could see legislators saying, well, this 15-day thing is dumb. The, 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 the animals are out of the barn by that time. They're, they're, the, the corral door was left open. Yeah, they're out there somewhere. And so, yeah, I could see nailing that, and that's probably what Georgia did. I, I, I'm not that familiar, I've heard some about it, but as we get, it, we gotta tighten up. It's gotta be, there are, it, it's gotta be positive, fun, come in, learn. I know when I did, I didn't wanna be there all the time, but I got there and I learned how to read, write, spell, do everything. And so I didn't have a lot of choice. I mean, I had to be there. And I, I did. I think you all had to be there. So if we can go down that road and not, not maybe like, oh, woe is me, we're losing, teachers are walking off, students are walking off. And now this new Supreme Court thing with that backpack of money on each student. And like the chairman just said, you know, we want them to go to school somewhere. Uh, but we really want them to go, I want them to go to the public school system because I think that's what makes America strong. If we can make that positive, not adversarial, oh, I, I think that's so exciting. So if everybody can start walking toward us instead of walking away, um, you will have a successful business. And that's really what this is. So I, I, I don't know how you condense all that down, other than maybe truancy, that better be two days. Two days, we find out what's going on. Where is that kid? Come on, you know, get it in and get them in front of a judge. We got judges, we got this, we got that, we got I see McFadden right there, we just roll on out and talk to them. I don't know, make some phone calls. Uh, but they gotta know that two days or one day, where were you? Just skipped school? You know what skipping school was when you were a kid? You didn't skip school, or if you did, you got in a lot of trouble. That was not, you know, and if that's gone away, we gotta get on top of it.
That, Mr. Browning, is so eloquent in all the things that you just said, it sounds great. However, we also know that the court system has not necessarily dealt with truancy in that same way that it may have been dealt with in the past. And so what, I guess what we're saying is, and what Ms. Thor is saying is that we need to have some more teeth.
Yeah, the legislators can do it, and I believe they can. And that's what we gotta have. We gotta have teeth. We gotta have teeth. Two days, 48 hours like that. Are, are you kidding me?
But right now, the process-
If Don Browning didn't go to school for two days-
Right now, Mr. Browning, that process is so lengthy, so if a kid has been gone 15 days,
I have my support.
And by the time it gets to the truancy process, you're looking at months that this kid has already been out of school, when you only have 180 days to work.
No, not happening.
The last order to show cause that I worked, uh, on, on truancy was a week or a week and a half ago. Um, the student in that example, by the time that we got to hearing and, and, and the student had been absent, uh, and, and we had initiated before the summer began, but the student had been absent for 90 days.
That's half-
That's a loss.
And it was, and it was a, and it was a fourth or fifth grader, so it's difficult.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, that infuriates me, that a student has not been in school for 90 days. And how does it get that far along? And the sad thing, this, the sad part is, is that's probably not the only case. Or there might be some that have 89 or 79 or whatever we wanna call it. So as a, is, um, you know, state level, that's also district level too, cause you know, hey, it comes back to board members, what happens at district office when we sit there and have policy and rules, and it's not always followed on a district level about following that policy too. So it's a, it's, it's shared responsibility. Um, it's not new, it's been around for many years, but it needs to be taken care of. And I love your idea of taking it to the legislators and giving it some more teeth.
Tighten it up, and there's always going to be those situations, and those are the outliers. Um, you know, the past couple of years, we've really struggled with transportation, that's no secret. Those, those absences get excused, and, and that's not the kid's fault, it's not the family's fault. You know, I, I'm talking about too many kids with no excuse. They, they, they should have been in school that day. They should have been on time and they should have been ready to rock. And, and they're not. And, and that happens over and over and over again, and-
And that's on us.
And that's on us. And in previous days, in previous days, the kid didn't come, which wasn't good either. It's, it's good to know where kids are. But the teacher wasn't held accountable. You know, through reducing their salary or, you know, having sanctions against them. That's just ridiculous.
Where are those kiosks?
Right.
Remember the kiosk? Are they still around? Are they gone?
For what? What is it?
For tardies. No one was around here? I don't think anybody was. There was-
Oh, for checking, checking kids in?
And they had to actually come into the office and check in at the kiosk, and it kinda held them accountable, but I don't know what ever happened with that.
A lot of schools have that sign that says you are late, you have to check into the front office. It's, it's being tracked.
Yeah, maybe they just don't show up then if they got, you know, that's another reason why you might not show up. I don't know. But you, if you don't show up, you skip school, they just call it skipping school. I don't know if they still call it skipping school, but if you skip school, there's, there's, you know, uh, you've got a principal and you've got a vice principal, and they are on your case and your parents, and I mean, I'm, I'm talking 24, 48 hours. This is a, this is turning into a, like an atom bomb going off.
Respectfully, Board Member Browning, I think that the type of, what you're talking about is skipping school where they're like middle school, high schoolers. Where a lot of these issues are happening are not at middle school or high school. They happen anyway. That's just kids, being kids. We're talking about elementary kids. We're talking about kids that, that, that they're not skipping, they're not out in the woods, their parents aren't bringing them.
Parents aren't bringing them.
We're, we're talking about this. And, and, and there should be some-
Somebody McFadden's out there.
There has to be some, some processes or some things where, where if they're coming in late, those parents need to come in and bring, check them out.
Something's up, something's up with that. If that's going on, it, it, it needs to get, it needs to get down and get serious. We've got judges-
I'm tired of spending my taxpayer money on all of these interventions when it's unnecessary. They're, they're little, kids need to be in school.
I know a half a dozen judges, and I'll just say, uh, none of them would put up with that. I don't know, we may have drifted off, but a lot of things have drifted off. If we've drifted off, it's mismanagement. That's the kind of thing we're trying to nail. So if we can nail it, then it's not on the kid, it's not on the mom or dad. Uh, it's, it's, uh, like, hey, do it, or you've got this issue. Now, it's like driving without a license or something. I mean, you, you, it, it's not gonna just pass. You'll be, we, we pulled you over for 120 days and drive without a license. No, I don't think we're going there. I think we're gonna jump on it, we're gonna get a little tighter than that.
Right, sure. With, with our tru- with our truancy issues, just let me give a brief, we've got, uh, by the time that a student is defined as truant in Florida law, we then have, we, we begin prior to that time, um, beginning early interventions with attempting to get, um, uh, the parent to comply with getting the student to school. A lot of focus particularly goes into effect with elementary and sometimes middle school students to make sure that that is happening. Uh, those interventions, we have an entire team that works on those items.
Okay, so we are-
Team goes out and visits multiple times, does multiple home visits and tries to get those people there.
Provide a bus route.
We provide a bus route, right? We, we have, um, uh, in, in fact, some parents simply say things like, well, just, you know, myself or the student oversleep and, and aren't getting to the bus and therefore don't have a way to get them there because don't have a car. We've gone so far as to literally, we have crates of alarm clocks that we hand to parents and go, here you go. But, you know, I mean, literally-
I'm talking about a negative issue, you know, where it's, it's better, it's easier to go to school than to take the consequences.
Right. So literally every possible thing that we're, that we can do from, from the school side, we're, we're initiating. I, I believe, based on my review of where we are so far. Then at some point, and again, usually fairly early, um, we begin coalescing those into the ones that are gonna have to go to court. When they go to court, they're noticed for court. We have already had, sit down in meetings with, uh, the judge who's doing those. I believe her heart's, she's well intentioned and, and experienced, and is going to be able to help us significantly with this process. But that also requires that then we have more regular, um, truancy court being held in meetings on a regular schedule as opposed to being held on a, on a much longer basis. And there was a period of time in which there was a-
It's all unacceptable.
Right.
So tighten up. I think from this point of view, uh, Ms. Thor, if I may, uh, just, uh, she outlined the problem. We have to tighten up the solution. Truancy, I can be behind writing here to our legislators, tighten up this truancy problem. We've got kids that are getting lost. Just tighten it up. Come on, come on. Stan, come on, Dennis, come on, Ron.
Any help would be appreciated.
Come on, Manny, let's do this thing. Let's tighten it up. I want no excuses. I don't even care why all the fish got through the net. I don't even care. I wanna come in with a haul of fish. I wanna make this thing happen. If we're supposed to be doing this, let's do it. Um, non-compliance is unacceptable to this board member. That's simple. Bang. Case closed.
And just for your information, Ms. Ms. Thor, myself, our social work staff, the judge, we've all sat down for meetings to try to expedite and coordinate that process because it's been something that over this last several months, we have identified as a priority. And I certainly wouldn't want the perception to be that what we're saying now is the judge needs to get tougher or, or the district needs- There, there's a number of things that we need to do to make a system that is functional and make it happen fast.
All of the above, and you didn't have this board member at that meeting, or this would have been said. And we've got the resources. I, I, at one time at the, at, at Stanton Weersdale, it had not been, this is the old school kind of thing where it just, five-year plans just kept rolling over. And I said, look, if I had to do a test, an algebra test, underneath these blinking lights, I would end up in an anxiety attack or something. It would just drive me crazy. I would go nutty. And they said, well, we can't do, we, you know, we gotta wait, we gotta put in. I said, no, we're calling the governor. And at the time, I said, get the governor down here. He either goes up and changes a ballast and I'll hold the ladder, or he can hold the ladder and I'll go up and change it. But this is done by the end of the week. It's gonna be done. And it was Dan, Don Zaharias was the principal at the time, and it was done. We just got in the board. I don't know what they did. They called somebody and they came down there and they ripped them all out and they put them all in. And I think the governor might have gotten involved in that one. I don't know. I, you know, I, I, maybe I was texting what's his name back and forth daily at the time. So it's, it's that kind of access we gotta have. We gotta put our feet down. We got, I think we can be leaders in this arena. Cause if we've got this problem, I guarantee you the other districts have got, have this problem.
And to, and to have one of the strongest attendance policies, um, or statutes is very, very important because it all filters down and it filters up. And I think your point was very well taken, Attorney Powers. It's, it's not- because it all filters down and it filters up, and I think your point was very well taken, Attorney Powers, it's it's not that there aren't people that have been coming up with all kinds of imaginative supports, and, you know, how can we help you, family? There's been so much outreach, but there comes a time.
Yeah, rubber meets the road.
Rubber has met the road, and if the teachers are gonna be held accountable, and if we are gonna be spending the money, then I'm tired of it being wasted.
This board member i- is is upset with this one, I am really upset, Ron DeSantis, I I will be a name dropper. The man is totally available, he is absolutely available. All of the legislators, all of our leaders, they're totally available, let's light this candle, and if you want me to do the EV thing, I'll I'll throw this one right on the side, bec- you know, right on with it, because I guarantee you, uh, the legislature can figure this one out. In some, it's probably gotta go in stages, and we aren't pointing fingers and blaming, and nobody else did, you know, it just, it just, go to the root problem, you said that two or three times today, and that's the way you solve a problem, you go to the root cause, you get it figured out, and then the person chooses school, because it might be their smartest move, it might be, and we just arrange it so that they come into the corral, they don't go the other direction because of these things we've put in place. And the governor can do it, that task force can do it, the legislature can do it, and Manny Diaz can do, he is totally available. The chancellor is totally available, just totally available. We have had it in Marion County, and we aren't gonna stand for it anymore, and this is something that's gotta be addressed this time, cuz Browning's going off the board, and Browning does not wanna leave a legacy of truancy. Absolutely, boom, case closed.
Don't you leave a legacy of success. That's what we're looking for, all of us.
Well, thank you, everybody, I really appreciate your support.
Well, that one, that one's got me upset, wow.
Um, anything else, Mr. Thore, Ms. King?
Do you have anything else, or was that it? Um, I was thinking about this earlier, and actually, today, a report has been out, so probably most of you guys aren't even aware of this, but the Department of Education has released a report, and it is showing that there has been the largest decline for nine-year-old students since nineteen ninety in reading, and it's the first ever drop in mathematics, ever, ever.
Say it one more time, what you just said.
There there is the largest decline in nine-year-olds with their reading, and it's the first ever drop in mathematics that they've ever, and it's attributed to COVID, um, and it's, I, the reason why I'm telling you guys that is because, one, I mean, we already knew with COVID and stuff that, you know, there's been a decline in education and academics, it's just, we know our students have fallen behind, and, you know, it can affect generations to come. But, the positive is, is that students are resilient, so my request is, is I was wondering if we could bring up to the legislation, cuz we do know that ESR, you know, next year is gonna end, and I was wondering if maybe we could get, or you guys could get get in front of it. Um, because we have found like our summer schools, and I know our super has even mentioned Saturday schools and stuff, but it costs money. But we do know that if our students are in school, they're learning if they have good teachers in front of them, and I was just, I don't know what y'all's thoughts are um, to get ahead of that, but maybe if the legislation could help with a revenue source, and I don't know how you guys would want to, you know, suggest it or pose it, but I would like to see us get ahead of that, because that is, um, that's a gap that's it's not gonna go away by next year, is basically what I'm saying, and now with these scores, you know, coming out today, that just even tells us that what we thought or what we were hearing is true.
So, so are you asking for like more funding for summer schools?
For summer schools or Saturday schools, yeah.
I could be in agreement with that.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know if it's priority, I think it's priority to teach our students, but I'm
I think it's priority, because I think, um, we've had summer schools the past few years, but that was ESR funds.
Correct, and it's gonna end, so I'm like, if we just start now getting ahead of it, rather than all of a sudden it's gone, and now we're like, oh, we don't have it, or I'm just trying to get ahead of the game, that's all.
That summer recovery has been very, very well received and and well attended. Um, this is an area where the community understands, they're reading the same news that we're reading, and they're worried about their kids. So many children, their educations were so disrupted, you know, we were a state, thank God, that reopened early and and had that back-to-school face-to-face option available, but a lot of states didn't, so I'm pretty sure what you're sharing is a nationwide trend, right?
It's nation, it was just a, it was an alert that came through, I'm sure we'll hear about it, so that's why, you guys probably haven't heard it yet, but you will, I'm sure tonight on the news.
It was it was national?
Yes, national.
Okay.
But we know that we've had our own struggles here in Florida, I mean, we're still struggling, thank thank goodness, Forest High School, I believe now, it does have a B.
That's correct.
Excellent, so that's just another great example of the tenacity of this district, and making sure that we get what we have worked hard to achieve. Um, but yes, uh, this, everything that happened the last few years is not just gonna magically go away in two years. So I would be all for continuing to direct our funding towards the most important thing, which is our students and and their success. And I would imagine that our legislature would be reading the same news we are, and, uh, may be quite willing to, um, fund all of the innovative, continue to help us fund, all that camp invention where our kids are coding, little kids, they're they're doing coding in the summertime, it's it's just amazing, the different programs, and how well-received they were, and how few complaints, I don't think I got any complaints about anything all summer, which was great, was a nice reprieve, so, yeah, to me, that's just bringing the case that we really need the continued support, the kids need it.
Mr. Browning?
Okay, thank you, Chair, yeah, okay, um, this would be my take on this, um, Ms. King, that I like the message, I don't like to ask for money, I like the message, and if you wanna be successful with this presentation, cuz that's what we're doing, we're going up there, we're we're gonna make a presentation, I can almost line up, line up the people we would see and say, do an experimental, mental mental gymnastics, just do a a, we run it by, I'm gonna tell you about what you'd get, might get a polite listen, but that's about it. Uh, the idea of more money is almost a non-starter. But, more efficiency, more education, more with what we have, uh, would be tightening up. Uh, as a matter of fact, I've already got it in my mind of, when you get to, and and I'll have this date, you scrub over, and I'll put the date, when Ms. Thore was talking about the kids not coming to school. And boom, you nail it, look, Senator, don't go through, you don't have to do anything you wanna do, but I want you to scrub this over to one hour and twelve minutes and thirty seconds, because they've got something to say, and bang, and and then, wow, oh, this is a tell. Cuz we're bossy, we gotta be bossy on this thing, we gotta just take the bull by the horns, I don't care about excuses, I don't care, I got that COVID thing, and I still haven't gotten my energy back, I mean, I'm I'm operating at about twenty percent, I mean, it's bad, it is bad. So, we're gonna have this in our nation, and now we've got, we all know, nobody trusts the news, so we got the news coming out, we got algorithms writing news, and then coming, you know, I mean, all that stuff comes, you almost can't trust it, so if we grab the positive side, which is what our job is, that is to be effective, and we nail it with, call it Georgia, I would call it Florida, I don't, we, the kids are going to school. You're gonna go to school, uh, uh, once I went to Indianapolis for the Indianapolis Five Hundred, and the policeman, my father was managing a hotel there, and the policeman pulled, you know, pulled me aside and my brother, and said, wait a minute, boys, what are you doing, why aren't you in school, oh, sir, we have, we got to come, and this was just prior to the June thirtieth, uh, May May thirtieth, Indianapolis Five Hundred. Oh, okay, well, you're, you're, but in other words, the whole society was on top of what Ms. Thore just said, and that is, it's gonna happen. It's not about money, you can keep throwing money at it, and it doesn't work, it just doesn't work.
I want our schools open, I'm, like, I want the attendance there, but I want our schools to be open longer, you know, like during the summer, during Saturdays, and that's gonna cost money, because there is transportation, and there, you're gonna have to pay for our employees and the food, and so it, that's why, you know, and that's why we've been able to do it right now, is because of the ESR dollars, but the ESR dollars are gonna go away, and then we're gonna have to prioritize it.
Is that the hundred and twenty-five thousand, yes, sir?
The million.
Million.
A hundred and twenty-five million?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that'll come away at a certain time.
Right, and that's what I'm saying now, so looking in the future, just getting ahead of it, trying to, you know, share that, it's critical right now that our students that have missed, you know, a year, maybe more, um, that they're, we get them in front of us with good qualified teachers, um, that's my goal, because I do believe that students are
I like it, I like all of, I like what you're saying, and I'm trying to advocate
I know, you heard money and closed down.
It can actually, it can it can actually win, and I think the way it can win is if you say, uh, Senator Baxley, we, okay, uh, Pasadena, who, I don't care who you talk about, but you 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 say, we have this as an idea, we are implementing this, we have this success, we aren't asking for anything, we're telling how we're gonna succeed, and this is a pilot program, and we're taking these dollars this year, because these are gonna be going away. And and once you start down that road, now there is room for the next chapter to say, uh, and these others that we've asked for, and now you start putting money in the general fund and what have you, these other things that we've asked for, or we've got fifty million dollars that we have not asked for this time, but we are gonna ask for it next year, so get ready. In other words, we've gotta get more imaginative with the message, cuz if you just go up there and ask for money, it's almost a a zero, uh, no-brainer, and we've got, they say, well, last time I looked, your budget's been going up like mad, and your student level is flat, and you're downhill on your on your academics, and so you lose, I don't like losing, I like coming in.
I'm I'm sorry, I I I don't mean to interrupt you, but I have to correct.
Go ahead.
Because you continue to say, walking in, talking about money as a non-starter.
Yes.
I want to express to you the five legislative priorities that the FSBA went in last year with. The first one was to support legislative efforts and increase funding in mental health. The state allocated twenty million dollars specifically for that. They went in and talked about accountability and assessments that did not have funding associated with it, but there was a win on that as well. FSBA supported legislative efforts to increase the base student allocation by at least three percent. Last year, the legislature increased the base student allocation by four point nine percent, that's all money, all of that is money. They also had a priority of workforce education, and Technical College received an additional eighteen million dollars in workforce educate. So all of these are money priorities, they went in asking for money, and they received it. The final one was recruiting and retaining qualified and talented staff, and there was two hundred fifty million dollars for teacher salary increase allocation, and a minimum fifteen dollar an hour wage across the board for all school staff. Those are all priorities that were massaged by the advocacy committee, we wordsmithed them, we talked them through, but saying that going in asking for money is a non-starter is frankly not accurate, because of all of these wins that we can verify actually occurred, additionally, the legislature created the funding mechanism for public education in in the state of Florida. Florida Education Finance Program is the funding mechanism, everything that we do in the state, in every single school district, is tied to how the legislature allocates those dollars and what those dollars are. So frankly, to say, yes, I understand that budgets are higher, I underst- I understand all that, we're not disagreeing on those issues, we're not. But to say going in talking about money as a non-starter frankly is not accurate, based on twenty twenty-one legit, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two legis- twenty twenty-two legislative priorities, and the successes that this district and all the districts in the state had.
I take your, I take your comment, uh, and I will, I will, uh, retort with this, I'm looking for success. As you walk towards success, you can say, um, the the second half of your critique of don't just come in and ask for money, because it's just not gonna work, that's my opinion, it's not gonna work, but how it can work is the the legislature legislators and the Department of Education and the governor are are active folks, they will tell you, they've got an agenda, they will tell any association, the Florida Association, you bet, they'll tell them exactly what's on their plate, exactly where they're going, exactly what they wanna do, this is not like, oh, well, shoot, that's a good idea, or where'd that come from? No, it goes the other way around, it goes to them, and then they say, oh, the legislature is 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 designed to uh, is ready to do this and this, there's an initiative the governor wants, here's, every one of those folks has an initiative. And so, if you wanna be successful, you go up and you say, um, Pasadena, what's what's on your plate? What is gonna get all the way to the governor? And she says, oh, this, this, and this, and you say, wow, three of those fit exactly into what we're looking for. So then you go up and you make that presentation, and now that isn't asking for money, that's being supportive. And that's the way, that's the strategy that works, it, coming from here, I mean, I I was in the meetings with you guys, must have been the an identical, almost a blank, uh, pico, is that what that word? Every time it was brought up was like a blank stare, like, okay, yeah, I got it, nobody uses a phone hook to the wall anymore, whatever, it's identical. But if you said, Dennis, what what's hot, where are you guys going, and how are you gonna make Florida? Ron, how are you gonna do it, and that's where you gotta talk, these guys work for us, the governor is Ron, he is, and I mean, he is Ron. He he is the man, he's a Navy guy, he's a solid guy, he's from Dunellen, come on, just a regular guy. Ron, what's on your agenda, what do you wanna do, and then you look on ours, you say, hey, what we talked about, and those are the things, you say, Superintendent, what do you absolutely have to have, what are your top ten, and give me a number on priorities? And then you're up there, and you say, well, how about this, how about this, it plugs right in, boom, wow, that Marion County is just brilliant, the way, why? Every time they show up, they walk away with their money, with their bags full of money, how how is that happening? So it didn't come from us, it came from them, and that's the exciting part, because it's an, it's a statewide thing, and you can you can take it to the bank, that it's gonna be good for the kids, that it's gonna be good for education, that it's gonna be good for every person here. And we don't sell them, that's just a mistake to think that, that's the way it works. They will tell us, like, here's what I hear, here's the program, here's the initiative, Manny's working, Oliva's working, all those guys are working, everybody's got an opinion, this one's to solve this problem, it's to solve this problem, and some of it's political, you know, we've got it, we're we're gonna be the leader in the nation, wow, how are you gonna, how you how you gonna mess with that? And so, boom, you get right on board, you light the candle, you make money, you walk away with your pockets full, and everything is great. That's that's where I am, I, please.
Something that I've noticed has an excellent change the last couple of years, and I know it's due to a large extent to, uh, Vice Chair Campbell's advocacy on in her work, is that we really are starting to see more of our senators and our representatives, and also in Congress, um, Kat Kamic has been visiting schools, that's where the relationship building is so important. Um, because I would preface it as, if we want to continue to be successful, I think that we have built some very successful, fruitful relationships, and having our team, which includes, as you were saying, Board Member Browning, the the team is in Tallahassee, and and the team is in Washington DC, and everyone has agendas, everyone has priorities, and it can all become pretty diffused, but now that they are really taking the opportunity of the invitations that you've extended, and and that we're extending, and getting a chance to really see it in action, um, has been a game changer, and to really see it in action, has been a game changer. And as evidence, just by the, the pride that I'm starting to hear, you know, when, when an individual school is visited by an elected official and they walk away inspired, then we know that we've done the right thing and, and we know that we're doing the right thing and we know that we're lighting that candle. And we can sit up here, you know, till four o'clock and, and talk it over. But I really would encourage each one of us to, to continue to, to build those relationships. That's how you get things done and, and that's how you learn how things work and that's how you learn what other people's situations are and, and, and what their priorities are. And, and through that conversation, you can end up with all kinds of commonalities, like, yeah, we can work together on this. This dovetails quite nicely into what, you know, the, the statewide initiative is or the national agenda is or the local. You know, we have to find those, those points that are just the easy wins and I, I feel like that's what we're trying to accomplish here.
I think so too.
Mm-hmm. And so I, I thank you for your leadership on that.
All right. We good? Because we don't want to be here till four o'clock.
Right, I have a dentist appointment.
Pushing this around.
Got to keep the smile bright.
Anything else? Ms. King, you had anything else? I think we, I think Ms. Campbell, you should have a whole bunch.
Do.
Stuff to work on, work with.
And I will submit individually, but I also will submit collectively those things that we had majority on. And I will indicate as such that they were from the majority of the board, specifically on those teacher retention and recruitment because we had several of ideas for that. But yeah, so I'll submit individually as well as collectively. If you all want to submit individually as well, I think that also helps us.
I don't, be honest with you, for me, I think if you're the advocacy, advocacy person that we have for our district, I let you submit ours individuals as well as collective. I don't have any other individual ones other than the ones we've already talked about.
Okay.
And that's just me. Now, the other board members may have some individual ones, but I think if you have them, that you be the one person, one person to submit them all.
Okay.
Board, how y'all feel about that?
And we're talking about to the School Board Association.
Correct.
Yeah, well, School Board Association, that's fine. I mean, why not? I mean, you, you send a letter, that's, that's no problem.
Big voice.
That's not a, yeah, that's not a big deal. I'm more concerned with the legislature. I'm more concerned with the Department of Education. I'm more concerned with the governor.
I understand all.
That's, well, no, no, that's what, that's what I'm concerned with. So, so when we say this, I like to be clear that we're talking about, you know, we have our opinions, sure, personally, you bet. I mean, we don't quit being people. We're individuals. We go, we do not speak for the board. We got that. Everybody's got that. Are we effective as individuals? Well, yeah, because that's what we are. We've got a board situation and if it's something is just a majority, it's a majority. No big deal. That's the ideas we're conveying. But if, we want to be successful, we want to manage correctly and we have an opportunity here in this district to jump to the top. We do. We really have that opportunity.
I think we all agree.
Well, let's do it. Let's jump to the top and not be ordinary, not be like the rest of them. Just jump to the top. I'm sorry. That's, that's the whole deal. And let the rest of them figure it out. You know, let them figure it out. I will not shrink back because I love the idea of education. I love the idea at every level of education and I don't care what the obstacles are because there's going to be almost an infinite amount of obstacles and, and we get to, we get to solve those. That's what we do for a living is we solve them and we go forward. And I'm not a bureaucrat. I mean, I don't know if you guys gather that, but I, I abhor the idea of getting in line for any reason. Forget it. Talk about Kat Kamic. I ran for that office, she was a helper bee when I was running for that office. And we moved, we moved mountains. That was the Tea Party, moved the mountains. Wasn't Don Browning. So I have no tolerance for getting in line. I'm sorry. You know, if I was ever in a, in, in a prison or something, I would get in line. I would get in line. This is a free country. You go right to the top. Davy Crockett, when I was a kid, boom, he says, you know, they gave him a, in Congress, they gave him a rifle, you know, like, he said, this, but this could put a rifle ball through the moon. This is incredible. In other words, you go to the top, you get it done, case closed, stop, go home, hug your family and, and get a good night's sleep and do it again the next day.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. That, that had to be your board comments because you just, you just said it all.
If that's the case, Chair, I appreciate it, but also I want that stop sign in down there at Stanton Weersdale. We are not going to have somebody collide with a bus. I have to throw that in and let's just make it happen because there's no reason not to. No reason not to.
Thank you. Elena?
Uh, yes, Board Member.
I'm sorry, let me back up. Any board comments from the other conversation?
On the legislative priorities.
First time I've been done retro, retro comments, that's a good one. That, that, that one, you, you've got to pat on that. That was beautiful and you did it to Browning. That is good. That, I, I applaud you for that, sir.
Elena, any comments?
Uh, yes, Chair, thank you. Board members, I do believe you received an email from FSBA about the winter conference, November twenty-ninth through December second in Tampa. If you could please give me your response as soon as possible. Registration opens September nineteenth and we certainly want to avoid what happened the last time as far as splitting in different hotels because they got booked up. So if you could please let me know by the eighteenth, we will be doing the reservations.
Yes, yeah, my, yes.
Yes, I'll, I'll send you an email right now, but.
That'd be great.
And I, I know I, I've already asked the November twenty-ninth Chair and Vice Chair training as well as new board member training begins at eight o'clock that morning. So both of those.
Yes.
For our new board. So November twenty-ninth is an all-day, not starting half-day, so.
I believe I'll be off the board by that time, but I will just make this recommendation that you put on my replacement and let her bow off it if she wants to. I, I would say put her on at my recommendation.
I've already spoken with Ms. Conrad.
Okay, okay, good, because that's, I, I, that's, that's good. And then everything is clicking and it's time sensitive and I appreciate that being brought forward. That is exactly what I was asking for before. That is exactly it. Thank you.
Um, the other thing is I'd like to let you, Board Members, know, moving forward, all travel conferences, all in-county travel, out-of-county travel will be handled by Ms. Jill Eason. So if you ever have any questions or anything, of course, you could reach me, but Ms. Jill Eason will be the one actually that will be handling those.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Same office. She's in my office. Thank you. That's all I have.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair. This is brief. I, Board Member King had a great point. Earlier, we were talking about Florida retirement system and, and providing support to our employees and I had to verify how often. I knew we were doing them, but we're doing them in October, January and March of each year. And we can certainly increase that, but to the conversation about opportunities and, and options, investment plan is where it really gets into the details of the six-month component without getting into a lot of details. That is where you have those options, right at the six-month point. But I just wanted to bring that forward as a follow-up. Ms. King, to your point.
So what your point, I think what you're saying is they like make it for everyone. They're like, oh, here's a little email and you may come. But I, I just, my hope is that our employees, it's one thing to have an email thrown out there and be like, here, come voluntarily. I just wish sometimes that our employees had a little bit of a better understanding other than that email, if that makes sense. Because I just think people get really busy and they just think about that it might be later and stuff like that. So, yeah, I'm not saying the district has never provided those workshops. I'm just wishing that maybe there was another avenue or, you know, that our employees would, could truly see and understand what benefits they have. That, it wasn't anything like that.
Oh, no, I don't think so. I, I think that's a great point. I'll use, I'm a personal example. I've never attended one. I mean, so, and a lot of people don't think they need to attend until they're ready to retire. So I, I think there's a better way we can communicate out. I just wanted to follow up on the sessions, but, but absolutely. Point well-taken to send out to all employees, here are some things you need to be thinking about in advance and know about.
Is that something we can do, like, and, because I think it's something, again, just like you both said, it needs to be out there. Is that something they can do, like, when they first come back to school in, at that week or a teacher work day or something like that? One of those days where you almost want to make it mandatory.
Where they have to actually.
Get MIP.
Right.
You know, and make it part of professional development because it is part of your professional life.
Because you have a lot of people, even, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna move away just from educators. You have a lot of people in our district, transportation, custodial, that don't know some of the things that they have in their benefits package and, and don't utilize it. And, and I'll be like, do you have this? And they'll be like, no, I don't know anything about it. I'm like, come on, guys, you got to. So I think as a district, if we offered it throughout one of those days that they're coming back, bring them back one day early and just do benefits and all that stuff and, and take them through it and, and let them, let it be aware. Because they look at the, the hourly amount, but really there's a lot more to their pay than just that hourly amount.
Because they might look at their, they might look where they are right now and be like, okay, I am twenty years in and I've worked here for twenty years and if I were to leave now, depending, because there's many options, you know, there's a lot of different things that could take place. And they might be like, well, if I don't touch my pension right now and I retired, I'll get like seventeen hundred dollars a month for the rest of your life. Or if I stay till thirty years, I might get twenty-five or thirty-four hundred, depending whatever your income is. That's always a given. Like, that money is, if, if you choose pension. Or if, no, I got a lump sum and I might take out two hundred thousand right now. So I'm not sure people truly understand or see it and know what belongs to them. Not like hearsay and, yeah, you got an FRS and it could be any number. Because you can, actually, one of the things on their workshops could be, do they have a login number and a password? They might need that to get in there and then they could look and track and see their options or even know who to speak to. So I just think that's a piece that people, and I've always said this, that they may not completely understand. It's there, it's available. We all assume that, you know, everyone knows and understands. I'm not sure everybody truly does. And I, that's all I'm saying is, I wish people had a better understanding of what their benefits are, their sick leave, but hey, if, you know, sick leave, if you don't leave, you, after a certain amount of time, you're reimbursed that money, you know? So I think there's just a lot out there people don't understand. Because they don't know, they're not aware. That's all.
Thank you. Can, may I? I know it's your time, but may, uh, I like that and, and it, if you add to that, then you've got the total package. And sometimes you think, oh, well, pay is only, we're only supposed to talk about pay and we don't talk about the fifty percent of benefits. Well, if we talk about the whole thing, now there's a, I'm just going to make this quotes, a perception of success. Oh, wait, you mean teachers? Oh, wait, that's, that's not a bad idea. Wait, you're thought of as a highly successful person, if, if I may. And that way, now, instead of, well, you know, we're, oh, we just barely make it. No, you, you, you go ahead and speak it out the way it, it's, it is. How exciting is that? Wait a minute. You may, you may have, may be able to really raise the standards. You've, you've got people knocking on the door to come, to come in because of the success. It's like, like a car on the driveway, whoa. Right out here, we got a Cadillac, we got a BMW and we got a Porsche. Whoa, hey, this is pretty uptown. Oh, you mean, this is, this is pretty prestigious. So that's exciting. What you're saying, and perhaps you can add that a ten-minute, a fifteen-minute, a half an hour on some of these things that we do on a regular basis and then have it become a regular thing. So it's brought up, you know, like that. And golly, that, I, I love what you're saying. I love that. Very prestigious, very positive. And we're spending the money. We might as well. The people out there are spending it. Wait, that is a pretty high-end thing. We don't have to look like we're hurting.
Yeah. Well, these people, it's their money. They've earned it. You know, and it's sitting there. They, they probably have, you know, some money there that they don't take in consideration other than their paycheck. And that's what my point is.
Get it, get it out there in front of the people and the, the whole works of, whoa, people are making some money.
Yeah, or if people are leaving their profession and considering a second career, come to teaching. You can get another pension or whatever, you know? There's good reasons to come to Marion County Public Schools and work here.
Be flooded with, with applicants.
Do you have anything else, Superintendent?
No, that's, thank you.
Attorney Powers?
Yes, sir. We just need to set a couple of dates for special work sessions to deal with the items that I mentioned earlier. We have, as I said, the, the four types of items. Two of those we're going to deal with on, on November, I'm sorry, on September twenty-seventh. Then as to that third section that included grievance process, animals, religion, drug-free workplace, those can be set as those become priorities within their area. As to the one hundred and seventy-two updates that are legislative, I mean, in response to legislative or rule changes, obviously, those are items that the board will have. They, I've given you some of that today, but I would encourage everybody to sort of be able to look at all of those so that they're able to, to know what we're going to be looking at prior to us having that work session. And it may be that that work session runs quickly and we're able to get through it without much difficulty.
That won't happen.
However, I would, I would anticipate that although if, if, based on my briefing with you at, that will occur at that, at that time in the public, based on my briefing with you and based on your read, this could be done within one work session. I would indicate that it would likely be that there may be issues result in there which board members have individual questions about, which again, we can only do in public. So I would say we should probably set two work session dates at minimum and then.
We don't need them, we don't.
We don't need them, we don't need them. And.
Well, can you just go ahead and set three? And then if we don't need them, we don't need them.
We sure can. And it won't be work sessions that already are, you know, designated work sessions.
Special work sessions.
Special work sessions for this particular area so that these will be the priority and just on your plate at that day. So.
What dates you got?
Well, we would like to at least begin the process, if not have it completed, by November seventeenth. And so let me pull up. And I understand that, Superintendent, I think that Julie may have given you some dates that were for a calendar of your availability.
Yes, you want to read all the dates that I received this morning?
Yeah.
From Terry, perhaps.
Because I can, I can, we can coordinate schedules now.
Certainly.
I found it to be difficult sometimes to send out an email saying, how is everybody's schedule going to meet for these days? Because that can be very difficult, but.
Right. So these are the dates I received this morning. Friday, October seventh.
Let's start with that one. I can do that.
And that is, that is the, as I said, a date that is not going to work for me. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought these came from your office.
No, no, they did not.
That will work for me because we have the FSBA Leadership Board of Directors meeting.
Friday, October fourteenth. And there could be other days. I'm just going off of a list of non-work session days.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to reconnect. My calendar just froze. Okay. Well, let's, let's then start with the week of the, the week of the twelfth, which is, we already have a school board meeting on the thirteenth. We have a, and this is October, I'm, I'm sorry, September week.
We're in October.
So we're going down toward October. All right.
We pushing everything to October?
Yep. So let me start there.
I'm happy to look at September. I'm just.
I would love to get one.
Sure what the conversation was.
Love to get one in in September.
Can we get one in in September?
There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work for me to do to get it to you, but yes, can we, are we able to meet our advertisement deadlines if we do it within there?
Just need seven days.
Okay. So.
And look at, maybe, so you're looking at Fridays, like the 23rd?
23rd Friday works for one date?
Thirty, thirty. I'm just throwing out dates.
Okay. In general, would we want to consider any particular day of the week? Let's start there. Any particular day of the week on a rotating basis for, say, three of them? Would our Fridays generally good for everyone?
Usually they're not for me.
They're not?
But it's okay, y'all want to, y'all are
Mondays are good too.
Mondays are usually good.
Okay.
Or Wednesdays. What day you tell?
All right.
Wednesday's better for me. Monday and Friday are potentially problematic.
What about you guys with Wednesdays?
Just, it's gonna depend on the day, really.
Wednesdays are good for me.
I have appointments every Wednesday in September, but that's okay. Wednesday should sleep my visit.
Now, we, for the month of October.
Well, can we settle if there's anything in September that we can do?
If September 23rd on a Friday works, that was one date that I heard.
I can do that.
I can do that.
I can.
You can?
Yeah, September 23rd.
Say can or cannot?
Can.
Can.
What about you, Kelly?
I'm not gonna commit that date, I may have something, but y'all go ahead. I just know in the past, lots of times, I have not done things on that date and then it gets canceled and it's wonky, so.
I got you.
But if you guys have a quorum, and if I'm there, that's great, if not, that's okay too.
Well, in the interest of time, then we'll
We'll start with September 23rd as one, as one labeled date.
Okay.
Okay? Moving then to the next, and again, I'm assuming a 9:00 AM session is sufficient with everyone? Okay.
If I may, Chair members of the board, I can attend with you on September 23rd, but I am committed at 1:00 to speak with our final leadership MCPS class.
That should be here long enough.
Okay, I just, I just want to let you, I'll let you know now.
About nine to 12.
Say nine to 12, and then whatever we don't get done, we'll put it on the next day.
They've committed time with us, I'd like to be there with her. Okay, thank you.
So let's cap it.
Nine to 12, or, okay.
Let's cap it at nine to 12.
Yes, let's cap each one at three hours.
Please.
I like it.
If we can.
Then following forward, the following week, September 30th is a Friday. Or, yeah, would, would September 30th, that Friday, that gives you a week to review the new set?
That works.
I'm unable to attend at FADS, that's our fall conference.
Let's move forward then from there. Oh, and, and speaking of which, yeah, that, that involves the following week in which there's an Educational Association Conference. Now, I can cancel that, I haven't signed up for it yet, but that's November?
October?
I'm sorry, October, sorry.
I could do Monday, the 3rd, I can't do
What about October 3rd?
I can't do the 7th that week, I can do the, Monday, the 3rd.
I can do Monday, the 3rd.
I'm sorry, my, my calendar is continuing to freeze for some reason, it's gonna be like the September dates on an October format here. Okay, there we go.
I'm good on the 3rd. Superintendent?
Yes, I could do October 3rd in the morning.
Yep, nine to 12, October 3rd.
Ah, and October 3rd, nine to 12, that works for me. All right.
That would be the second one, so we would just need one more.
That'll be, and if needed.
If we need it, but we can go with the schedule. Now, what about the 10th, the following Monday?
If I do the 3rd, I can't do the 10th, if I do the 10th, I can't do the 3rd.
There's no school on
I'm sorry, the 10th is
Yeah, let's do the 3rd, let's
We're not making staff come in on it.
10th is Columbus Day.
Yeah, 10th is, well, I mean, maybe not everybody has it off, but.
So what about the 14th?
Looks good to me.
14th looks good.
I can't be there, but rock on without me.
Well, if there's just two of us, because I haven't heard Mr. Browning or Miss King talk about it.
I'm, I'm with Kelly, I, I can probably clear these dates, but I have to clear them and I can't do it, I can't commit to it right now, so don't count on me for a quorum.
What about the 12th?
But I likely will clear it.
Can you do the 12th? Can you do the 12th, Nancy?
In addition to the 14th?
No.
Not that whole week, in fact, I'm not gonna be at the school board meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
October 11th.
Let's jump to the 17th then.
17th works for me.
17th works for me.
Okay.
I'm good for the 17th.
Ah, and
October 17th.
That was the problem I was having with the freezing there. I need to go back and find out if we can alter the 3rd. That's, that is, I gave you an accurate date, October, October 3rd through 7th, that week is, is full. So I've got Okay, so so far we've got September 23rd. We've got, are we going with September 14th that Friday or not?
No.
September 14th is a Wednesday and the answer is no.
It's still doing it, I'm, I'm sorry. Let me get, let me just get a regular calendar. Let me get a regular calendar and pull it up here.
Once you get a date, then perhaps I can move, I've, I've got some things that I have to do and I may, I can, I do have some, some leniency in terms of whether I make a reservation or I don't.
3rd, 3rd. Oh, you said these, 3rd was not good for you, right?
Okay.
23rd for sure.
So, we said already
No, I have the, oh, he said the 3rd.
September 23rd, that is one that we're solid with.
Right.
Next, Sep, uh, we have October, right, that first week of October is, is no. Then on September 14th, were we?
No, October 14th.
Sorry, October 14th, now I'm doing it, not me, it's not the computer.
We can do October 14th.
October 14th? That's a Friday?
Or that's when Ms. Thrower's not there?
That's correct.
Okay.
Ms. Thrower is not available on that day.
That was a Friday, so we said not, we said nothing that week.
Nothing that week.
So we came back with the 17th.
17th, October 17th.
October 17th, so that's our, our second solid, October
Yes.
17th.
Make that work.
She's good.
Okay. So we need one more date sometime after October 17th.
As a possible.
Anytime between, as a possible, right. Anytime between then and sort of mid-November.
Let's look at 21st or 24th?
Yeah, I can, I can definitely do the 24th. 21st, I have some appointments.
I can do the 24th.
October 24th.
Okay.
That way we sooner than later. I'm good with the 24th.
Yeah. And hoping we get them done before
Restate those, restate those dates.
Those dates are September 23rd, October 17th, and October 24th, 9 to noon.
And the 24th is a, is a fill-in, you know, perhaps.
It's a possible.
And so it's a possible, so the priority is going to be, if I have to move something, the priority is the 23rd or the 17th in terms of more solid, but you do have a quorum.
I would encourage the board overall, though, that, to assume that since we're cutting these to three-hour sessions, unless when, after, after I've briefed at the beginning of each session of, and I've given you the, the updates as they will look, at any one of these, there could be one policy that takes a lot of discussion. If, when we look at these things, and we won't have a way to know until we get there, if when we look at these things, it appears that, yep, there's my briefing on it, these are required by law, it's largely statutory, nobody's really got anything discussed, we might not take three hours on one. On the other hand, it may be that there are four to five policies out of 172 that get us all talking about a lot of things and end up that we need five sessions instead of three. So I would, I would hold our three sessions absolute. And then if we need more between October 27th, or, sorry, October 24th and November 17th, we still got time to get those.
I'm good with that.
So I would plan on right now the idea that we're gonna keep
All three.
All three at minimum and possibly need more.
So I know this sounds crazy, but with the new board getting ready to come, I mean, is this stuff imminent? Like, it needs to be taken care of immediately?
These are legislative
Or can it start after November? Because there's a brand-new board and I'm inclined to think that they could probably bring their thought, you know what I mean, especially if there's gonna be more meetings and stuff.
Yeah, and I would say if it was creation of new policies, that's, that's definitely even more so true. These are things that have been identified already by any law as being legislative changes and updates and, but they require, because of the process, they go through rulemaking development, that it be, that you guys go be presented. So, now, because if we put it off until those board members are on, one of the process, we potentially, we run a risk of being non-compliant for a longer period of time, which isn't a good thing.
Yeah, we don't want that, okay.
Now, they can always alter it at a future, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. It can be altered at any time if we bring back any particular policy. What I'd like for us to be able to get to as a district is we were trying to focus on solidifying the policies that we had before we went update and have to go back and fix any that needed updates along then. We've gotten to that point, big success for us, yay. And now, here's the updates that are already waiting for us just right out of the gate. And then from there, next updates on any policy can be revisited anytime and the update lists will get smaller as we go. So.
I think there's a, on, on that issue and Ms. King's issue, I think it's incredibly important, especially with the things that trouble me. I don't want to saddle anybody with the enforcement, the due process, some of those things. If, you know, I mean, you're within days. And I just don't want to saddle somebody with it, but I'm adamant about the way policy is implemented, what I've seen. And both in the code of student conduct and this. And, and it, I mean, you're within a couple of days. I want them to have a full shot at the thing and not have it, you know, be a majority decision just because this board perhaps doesn't want to go there and they may be absolutely happy, or maybe not.
Right, and I'm gonna encourage the board not to go into a real lengthy debate on those implementation discussions on these. These are not implementation of the policy, this is what policy needs to exist to comply, to be compliant. Then as far as implementation goes, if, I mean, the superintendent, of course, and, and all departments have their marching orders as to this is what the law requires. How we go about it, this is our board policy from here on out, those are things that can be processes developed through the superintendent, they can be departmental procedures. Those are, and, and those continue to have oversight by the board all of the time. But I, I wouldn't wanna, if the law says X, I, I don't want us to be non-compliant and have, you know, hours of discussion about all the possible, I mean, not that discussion's bad, but hours of discussion about all the possible, well, we might want to try to write this in and write that out because we need to be compliant first and foremost. Then, implementation compliance is something that is a secondary aspect.
Well, for me, for me, dragging it across the finish line is how it's implemented. It must, we must have identical enforcement across the board on any policy. Or I will not do the policy because it's just, it's incumbent on fairness, due process, that it be clearly understood that the, that policy is implemented the identical way, regardless of, let's say, an issue of a male and a female. It's identical, that's the way it is.
I think we have a policy on that, in fact.
Well, but I mean, the implementation, the way I, I would like to see it done that way because I've seen over time issues that are, you know, it, it, all issues, just using that one, all sexual questions fall on the woman. The woman is the cause of this. Or whoops, wait a minute, there's a, there's a switch in time, all sexual issues are incumbent on the man. You know, it's, it's brought about. So, so what I'm saying is it must be implemented clean, clear, like you're a judge because these people's lives are at, at stake here, their, their futures.
Yes, sir.
And so, for me, and you may not want it, you may not want a, a, a majority program because I will not go down a road that is not fair to every single student, every single employee.
Absolutely. And what I'm gonna be bringing to the board is Florida law, for example, says, here are updates, this is our current policy, Florida law says we must also do this. Do you want to abide by Florida law or not? And if so, then yes, the policy goes in, and if it does not, if not, then that's a decision the board has to make. But if federal law says that we must do this, here's the policy on that. How we implement it, those are really discussions for, that need to happen later.
For me, again.
But many times our policy, I'm sorry.
I say implementation is everything because if, if one side has no representation and the other side has all the resources of the district, that's not right. It's not fair. And so implementing policy
Are you talking about the code of student conduct items?
I'm talking about both. Both will be implemented, so they must be implemented and that implementation must be fair. If you go to court, you're treated the same regardless of your position on either side of it.
Well, I mean, I'm open to consensus of the board, if the board wishes to not begin this process until after new board members have taken their seats, that's fine. I just, I, I'm concerned about the compliance issue. As your attorney, I'm gonna say that we probably need to look at these and, and put them down for compliance. Or if not, then that's, I mean, it's prerogative for scheduling.
Chair, I'm totally comfortable with, with it being implemented, I just don't want to saddle anybody, I'm adamant about this. And so it's, it's, it's your call, do you want, you know, it, it, the policy will be implemented. Do you want it to be unanimous or do you want it to be majority? It, it really won't matter because I tell you, I cannot get behind something that is not implemented fairly.
I don't, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's just a biggie for me.
I don't see that anything that you're, that, of what you mean is involved in any of what I'm talking about here with these policies.
Okay, so, I'm just saying, I'm making that statement to be open and transparent with everybody. I, I don't want to trap anybody with something and now we gotta go undo it, you know, so I'm, I'm just being real open.
Right.
And, and, you know, I, I can't be more genuine in that. But I am also quite established in the idea of law and order and fair, fair implementation of, of law. That's, that's, that's a given and I haven't seen it. Or I've seen it the opposite of that, or, or a variation on that in my time here, and I, I think we need some safeguards in there.
Right, and I would encourage, of course, I always do, any board member to bring notes with them regarding any of the policy updates or changes that you have. So that we're not just reviewing and discussing, you know, for the first time. If you have some suggestions as to what we do, please feel free to bring those with you to the work session so that we can have potential items that will fit if you have an alternative solution or suggestion. That will be very helpful.
That's part of my thoughts for today, that's why I'm making these comments. So, you know, perhaps the implementation issue is not important, you know, to the rest of the board members. If, if that's the case, you know, operate ahead of time. I won't say how I'm voting on anything until I hear, I look at the entire proposition. But it's incredibly important to me that all parties are treated equally.
Point taken. Point taken, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Attorney Powers, with that, will your department be able to give us the notebooks with those?
Yes, what we'll do is, we're gonna, we're gonna pull out as many policies as we can give analysis on between now and our very first meeting, which will be, I am going to assume the vast bulk of them. Then we will get that ready for the board. But I would, it will be divided with, into sections of policy and we will begin with those sections numerically, so therefore we'd start with one section, move to the next. It might be that we're able to get through several sections on us, on the same date.
Thank you.
And then, yes, I'll provide you with, with my briefing and updates and, and then we'll, we'll get things set for we'll, we'll get things set for as soon as we're, as soon as we're able. So I, I, I think that can happen on a fairly quick timeline for the latter two meetings. The first meeting is going to be just a lot of.
Got you.
Don't throw anything else at me for a little while.
Got you. Thank you, sir. Ms. King, you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
Just two quick things. The first one is that I continue to have an interest in an alternative to our current alternative placement process and locations. In my opinion, this board member's opinion, that we need some sort of step-down model with an internal alternative placement option for some of our first-time offenders that specifically focuses on their educational success and potential mental health needs. We, we're going to have to start talking about it sometime, but I, I personally believe that we need to have an alternative to our current alternative placement process.
I want to hear about that, that's good.
And then finally, on November 17th, we have a work session that I will not be able to attend that day, just to go ahead and put you guys on that awareness. I know that Ms. Thrower said she's going to, November, November 17th, I'll be at an Excel and Education, Excel and Ed Conference and, with several advocacy members of the FSBA in Salt Lake City, so that's all I had.
All right. I don't have any comments. We've, we've spun this thing a lot, many different ways today, so with me having no comments, meeting is going to be adjourned at 2:32 PM.